Good afternoon. I will kick off our city council meeting, our September 23rd, 2025 meeting. I will call to order, and we will start with our invocation by our city manager, Mr. Aaron Adams, followed by the flag salute. So if everyone could please stand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would you please bow your head? Generally, Father Lord, we give you thanks for the blessing of calling Temecula home, whether we work here, or we live here, or we serve here. We know it is a blessed city, and there's so many things that are going well. But we also know, Lord, there are people hurting, and we pray for that they would be properly resourced. Lord, I also want to lift up the city employees that call this their employer, just continue to protect them, guide them, as well as our first responders and police and fire personnel, putting their lives on the line each and every day to make us a safe city. And we appreciate them, so continue to protect them. Lord, I pray for this agenda this evening, the council. Just give them wisdom and discernment in managing the policy of this great city, and we give you all glory and honor in Jesus' name. Amen.
Everyone can face the flag, place your right hand over your heart, and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Alexander.
I'm here.
Mayor Calvis.
Here.
Councilmember Ron.
Here.
Councilmember Schwenk.
Here.
All right, all five of us are present. We're going to switch around the agenda for today, and we're going to move our business items up front. So with that being said, we will start with business item number 15, which is appoint members to serve on the General Plan Advisory Committee. Madam City Clerk, do we have a staff report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, happy to provide that staff report for you this evening. As you are aware, the city is undertaking a general plan update process. This particular process involves a comprehensive, multi-phase process, including the city's future development and quality of life for consideration. It is a long-term vision for land use, circulation, housing, public safety, parks and recreation, and other key aspects of the community. The process includes extensive public engagement, environmental review, and adoption by the local governing body, U.S. City Council. To assist in these efforts, the city council is going to appoint a General Plan Advisory Committee, affectionately referred to as the G-PAC, consisting of 15 to 20 members. We're very happy to report that the recruitment did run from October 1st, 2025, to December 31st, 2026. Oh, I'm sorry. That is the term that will be for the G-PAC, October 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2026. We are very happy to report that the recruitment that ran from August 15th, 2025, to September 15th, 2025 resulted in 74 applications. So, good turnout. And so what we are going to do, unless you have any further direction, I do not have any speakers on this particular item. We can go ahead and proceed with the process unless council has any questions.
Any of my colleagues have any questions? Is there anyone out there that would like to speak on this item that did not hand in a slip by any chance? If so, please raise your hand or do so. If not, with no public comments, we can start off with appointing members.
Wonderful. Mr. Mayor, as you had indicated previously, the council had agreed to 15 to 20 members, and each council member will have one initial appointment, and then we will go into rounds of three names. No individual will be appointed by less than three votes, and then we'll take one collective vote at the end, so that way we don't have to take multiple motions. So first, Mr. Mayor, what I would ask for is for you to facilitate each council member providing me with a single name for the first five.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. All right, we will start off with our first round draft pick here. Councilmember Stu, would you like to start us off?
Yes, Zach Elliott.
Zachary Elliott is my first-round choice. Zachary Elliott. Councilmember Ron?
Yes, Denise Wilson.
Councilmember Schwenk?
My choice is David Flores.
And Mayor Protem?
David Quisala.
And mine will be Mark Luker.
Mr. Mayor, let me go ahead and confirm. So, Councilmember Stewart's choice, Zachary Elliott; Councilmember Schwenk's choice, David Flores; Council your choice, Mr. Mayor, Mark Luker; Councilwoman Alexander's choice, David Gazata; and Councilmember Ron's choice, Denise Wilson.
Yes, ma'am, that is confirmed.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, we will now ask for you to facilitate the top three names from each of your colleagues, and we will be keeping track of the tallies with each name that is repeated, and then after the first round, I'll let you know what we have.
All right. Councilmember Schwenk, would you like to start us off?
Sure. Okay, so, you know, you're saying the top three. These are really in no particular order. These are folks that I find will add a ton of value to this commission. So my first choice will be Jeff Kingsburg. Second would be Lyman Lecters, and Bhavani Vajkarur will be my third for the first round.
Councilmember Stewart?
I want Annette Brown, Jeff Comicero, and William Joyce.
Councilmember Ron? Oh, hang on. Are we going slow enough for you, Madam City Clerk?
Yes. Please don't speed up. You're on perfect track here.
All right, I will, did somebody select Annette Brown?
I did.
You didn't. Stu? Okay, Adam Eventov, Tammy Marine, and Richard Valdez. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. First one is going to be, no particular order, Evan Tiss. Next one is going to be William Joyce, and the third one is Bishop Terrence Hudley.
Okay, and what was the first name you read?
Yes, ma'am, William Joyce.
I have William Joyce, and I have Bishop Terrence Hudley.
And Evan Tiss, right? So Evan Tiss, Bishop Terrence Hudley, and William Joyce.
All right. Mine will be Anna Minsberg, Kathy Seismar, and Jeff Kingsburg.
Okay.
Exactly how I thought it would go, by the way.
Yes. So, yes, Councilmember Schwenk, you were right. So, with that being said, I will just share, we have no members with three at this point. We do have two members with two, Jeff Kingsburg and William Joyce. Were either of those two names on anybody else's list?
What if we, Madam City Clerk, what if we go down for our next round of three, then the follow-in round, and then you would just have to keep a tally?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Could I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Because, I mean, he didn't vote for Annette because he thought he had to pick a different...
So you're tallying the, we're not...
Yeah, every name needs three. So, no problem, that's what we're going to do, next round of three, sir.
Perfect.
This is a good bluff round.
With that being said, Councilmember Ron, you want to start us off on the next round of three?
Okay. Jeff Comicero, Richard Valdez, and Tammy Marine.
Councilmember Stu?
Tammy Marine, Jeff Comicero, and Will Joyce.
Councilmember Schwenk?
Jeff Comicero, Tammy Marine. Are you wanting me to pick Jeff Kingsburg again?
Please do not repeat anybody that you already...
Yeah, yeah, okay, just double checking. Steve Massa.
Mayor Protem?
Okay, Anna Minsberg, Todd, or Louis Todd, and Jack Guerrero.
All right, and I will go with Justin Homquist, Tammy Marine, and Will Joyce.
Okay, at this point, we've got some movement. So, we have Jeff Comicero with four, we have William Joyce with four, we have Tammy Marine with five, and those three can go ahead and come off. So with the five you've already selected, you are up to eight. Next round of three, please.
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Sure. So, so far, we have the five picks, the total eight members are Zachary Elliott, David Flores, Mark Luker, David Gazata, Denise Wilson, plus Jeff Comicero, William Joyce, and Tammy Marine, which totals eight. So we're looking for at least seven more.
All righty, thank you very much. Mayor Protem, would you like to start this round?
Yes. Can we pick somebody that we've already picked? No, right?
No.
Okay. Just to let all of you know, I think Evan Tiss is our only first responder on here, so just throwing that out there.
Evan who?
Evan Tiss. He's a retired firefighter, FYI. Let's see, who is my next one? Next one I'll do is Adam Eventov, and Mr. Yun Lee, and Sheri Franklin.
Councilmember Schwenk?
Thank you very much. I will choose Adam Eventov, Eric Faulkner, and Seabrook Mendoza.
Councilmember Stewart?
Did I already say Annette Brown? Okay. And Will Joyce is already locked in. Is Kingsburg locked in already too? Yes? No?
There's two.
No.
Evan Tiss? Or, yeah, Evan Tiss. Did I say, I'm brain farting now, Adam Eventov? Did I put him down already too?
No.
I don't, have you already selected him? I don't, I'm not keeping track of who's selecting who.
Oh, got it.
So, if you haven't selected him, I can put him down.
I don't think I did.
Okay.
Yeah.
Councilmember Ron?
All right, let's see, Annette Brown, Eric Faulkner, and Lyman Lecters.
All right, for mine, I will go with Bhavani, I'm going to butcher the last name, V A J, Vajahar.
Vajkarur, okay.
That one, thank you for pronouncing that. Evan Tiss, and Shirin Lieberman.
So at this point, we are adding Adam Eventov, we are adding Jeff Kingsburg, we are adding Evan Tiss. So, you are now up to 11. And I will also share with you, at this point, Annette Brown has two, Eric Faulkner has two, Lyman Lecters has two, Anna Minsberg has two, Bhavani Vajkarur has two, and Richard Valdez has two. All right, one more round, sir.
All righty, thank you very much. Councilmember Stu, you want to start us off with this one?
Okay. Well, I'll go with Richard Valdez, Lyman Lecters, and... Oh, shoot, where did she go?
Not yet.
Mark Latour?
Laterno.
Laterno, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Stu. Councilmember Schwenk?
Annette Brown. And Alexandra Bailey.
Councilmember Ron?
And Kathy Seismar.
Mayor Protem?
All right, Richard Carillo. Let me see. Don Snyder. Was that two? And Sheri Monroe.
All right, mine will be Richard Valdez, Theo Beck, and Alex Bailey.
So, we can go ahead and add Annette Brown, we can add Lyman Lecters, and we can add Richard Valdez. So that is three more. So you are now up to 14. And I will clarify that right now, Alex Bailey has two, Eric Faulkner has two, Lynn Kelly has two, Shirin Lieberman has two, Anna Minsberg has two, Kathy Seismar has two, and Bhavani Vajkarur has two. One more round, I think we can get there.
And we have the option to go more than 15, is that correct?
Well, 15 to 20.
15 to 20. I am not opposed to going 20. I don't know how my colleagues feel, to meet more the mayor. But we'll do one more round, and we'll see where we land. We will start this round off with Councilmember Ron.
All right. Sheri Monroe. I'm going to butcher that last name, but Bhavani?
Vajkarur, yes.
Yes. Did I already request Lynn Kelly? Okay. Shirin Lieberman?
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Stu?
Alex Bailey. And Silvio Pacheco.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Schwenk?
Bishop Terrence Hudley. And Ron Wilson.
Mayor Protem?
Do we, who do we have for doubles at this point in time anymore?
Who do we have for what?
Doubles. Like, is anybody close, just right on the edge, any extras that we just had?
Oh, yes. So, for two right now, you have Eric Faulkner, Bishop Terrence Hudley, Lynn Kelly, Anna Minsberg, Kathy Seismar. Yes, and that's it.
A couple got in, though, correct?
I'm sorry? And then a few got in, yes. But those are the ones with twos right now. So if you haven't voted for one of those, those are the two that you might be interested in.
Okay. I don't know if anybody voted for this person. Amy Fritus? Did we do that one? She a new one? Richard, we did. Did we do Don Snyder? Sorry. Just went past my list.
You already called him.
I did, okay. And Shirin? Am I up to three yet?
That is three.
Okay.
All right. My three will be Rhonda Wilson, Sidney Hamilton, and Steve Massa.
All right. Okay, so Alexandra Bailey has three. Sheri Monroe has three. Bhavani Vajkarur has three. So that's one, two, three, four that you added, and you're now up to 18.
Does everyone want to go for 20?
Finish it up.
Even 20?
I'm good, I'm good where we're at.
I'm good where we're at, too. Yeah.
Good run?
Yep.
All right. We'll call it 18.
All right. So, would you mind if I went ahead and just, because I know I have a couple of colleagues here that are keeping track as well, so I just want to make sure that the names are, we're all on the same page here. Okay, so we've got Alexandra Bailey, we've got Annette Brown, we've got Jeff Comicero, we've got Adam Eventov, we've got Zach Elliott, we've got David Flores, we've got William Joyce, we've got Jeff Kingsburg, Lyman Lecters, Shirin Lieberman, Mark Luker, Tammy Marine, Sheri Monroe, David Gazata, Evan Tiss, Bhavani Vajkarur, Richard Valdez, and Denise Wilson.
As the list that I have, everyone concur?
Awesome. So we will go ahead and take a motion to go ahead and approve that slate of 18 individuals.
All right.
Move approval.
Second.
That has been moved and seconded. Let us vote.
Give me just a second here.
And item number 15 passes unanimously, five to zero. Looking forward to that G-PAC. And speaking of G-PAC, we will move on to item number 16, receive, report, and adopt general plan update, community outreach program. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yeah, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'll be presenting the community outreach plan for the general plan update. So we have three goals with regard to community outreach for the update. The first being, we want public participation to be the foundation for this effort. We want to get a diversity of thought, ideas, and solutions. And then finally, we want to be consistent with the core values identified in the Quality of Life Master Plan, specifically an accountable and responsive city government, and that's a government that helps the community navigate through change by providing opportunities for meaningful public engagement. And we've already started this effort. What you see on the screen before you is the Every Door Direct Mailer. That's a card that went to all of the businesses and residents in the town. Our consultant worked with the U.S. Postal Service and mailed out 45,000 of these over the weekend of September 12th through the 14th. And that card just notifies residents that we're updating the general plan, and then there is a QR code that will take you to the website that's dedicated to the general plan update. And what we want to have is an open and transparent process. We're working on branding the effort. So you see the logo there, the Temecula General Plan 50, that is complementary to the Q L M P 40 that we updated. That's Quality of Life Master Plan. And then you see a screenshot at the bottom of the page, that's the general plan update webpage. You can see across the top, there's the homepage, frequently asked questions, get involved, documents and maps, calendar, and contact us. So if people go to that website, temeculaca.gov/generalplan, they can get information there, and then they can sign up for notifications as well, and review documents. Also, as part of the effort for public participation, the city is doing the True North Community Survey. The last time we did a survey like this was in 2021, and we're updating for this year, 2025. I understand we have some draft results, we're still compiling. But that survey is our community report card on facilities and services provided by the city. It measures resident satisfaction and areas, identifies areas for improvement, and those results will be shared with the G-PAC. And those results will be shared with the G-PAC to help inform the general plan update. We're also engaging residents through social media. You see some screenshots there, we're already, we've already done some short videos. You see our Madam City Clerk there, she helped recruit for the G-PAC. And then Laurel Reimer is the city's consultant managing the general plan. And she's helping to promote the visioning workshops that are taking place very, very soon. And we'll also be gathering statistics similar to what we did for the Quality of Life Master Plan update. All of the social media that goes on Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter will be compiling results for likes, comments, shares, and impressions. And we'll report back to you at the end with how much engagement we've had. In addition, we'll have in-person engagements, so rather than inviting people to meetings, we're gonna go to where the people are at. So we're gonna have visioning workshops, community open houses, pop-up events, and we will conduct stakeholder interviews. And those visioning workshops start tomorrow night. So the map on the right, those are the council member districts. And the first visioning workshop is tomorrow night. That's for District Five, that's Councilmember Schwenk's district. That'll be at the Margarita Rec Center on October se- second. That will be at the Temecula Library, that's for District, District Three, for Mayor Kelfis's district. On October sixth, District Two, for Councilmember Alexander, will be at the Vail Headquarters. On October seventh, that's District Four, that's Councilmember Stu's district. That'll be at the Meadowview Clubhouse. And then on the eighth, that is District One, for Councilmember Ron. That, that'll be at Hawks Point at Red Hawk Golf Course. So if you're a resident, you don't have to just attend your district's open house. If that doesn't work for you that night, you can go to any open house. You can also go to all of them. It's, it's an open house format, so you can drop in, ask questions, learn more about the process, and give us your input. It's not really a formal presentation, it's an open house format. They start at six. And then there will be meetings, of course, there will be six to eight G-PAC meetings. Those are noticed and open to the public. And on, excuse me, on October seventh, we'll be holding a city council housing workshop. That's from ten to one. There will be four significant agenda items at the workshop. And then in addition, our contract with the consultant includes up, up to eight special study sessions with the Planning Commission and/or city council. There will be sequin noticing and public hearings, so as part of the general plan update, there will be an environmental impact report prepared. When you do an EIR, there's a mandatory scoping session at the beginning of the process. And then at the end, there's a notice of completion. So we notify residents through the newspaper and our typical noticing. And then we also notice various agencies and utility districts. And then finally, at the end, there will be public hearings before the Planning Commission and the city council. And then finally, there will be other efforts, we'll, we will unify, utilize Temecula TV Channel Three and the city app. And then, just like we did for the Quality of Life Master Plan, we can advertise on the auto mall sign, which sees, sees over a hundred sixty thousand cars per day. So those are our community outreach efforts. We can make adjustments, we can take your input tonight. And with that, staff's recommendation is to approve the resolution adopting the community outreach plan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Peters. Do we have any questions of staff? All right, Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments real quick? No public comments? Thank you very much. With that, I will entertain a motion and a second, or discussion if we wanna have it.
Move approval.
Second.
That has been motioned and seconded to approve and adopt the general plan update, the community outreach program, item number sixteen.
Mr. Mayor, can you please repeat the first and the second?
The first was Councilmember Ron, and the second was Councilmember Stewart.
Or the opposite, flip-flop. Flip-flop, flip-flop.
There you go.
And item number sixteen passes unanimously. All right, we will move on to item number seventeen. Consider adoption of resolution opposing Proposition Fifty, the Election Rigging Response Act, at the request of Mayor Potem Alexander. Madam City Clerk, we have a staff report, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do have a staff report, and I will be turning it over to Councilwoman Alexander in just a few minutes. Proposition Fifty is a constitutional amendment on the special election ballot for November fourth, 2025. The amendment was referred by the legislature as Assembly Constitutional Amendment Number Eight, ACA Eight, in response to mid-decade redistricting in other states. Proposition Fifty does the following. Number one, authorizes California to adopt new legislature-drawn congressional district maps for use in the 2026, 2028, and 2030 U.S. House elections. Number two, suspends the California Citizens Redistricting Commission for congressional maps until 2031. The Department of Finance estimates that the special election will cost approximately $250 million. Proponents of the measure argue it counters partisan gerrymandering in other states. Opponents of the measure argue it undermines the voter-approved independent redistricting model. Litigation regarding mid-cycle redistricting is pending in multiple states and may find its way to the U.S. Supreme Court. If Proposition Fifty passes, Temecula may be placed in new congressional boundaries as early as 2026, changing existing representation. Temecula has benefited from many years of existing representation. Representatives Calvert and Isa have done a great job helping Temecula obtain federal funding for many projects, including but not limited to $50 million for the French Valley Interchange. Temecula has intentionally and carefully built a great relationship with existing representatives. It is therefore recommended that the city council discuss the item and provide direction as desired. And with that, I'll turn it over to Councilwoman Alexander. And we do have one public speaker on this item as well.
Thank you very much. Would you like to hear the public comment first?
Yeah, let's do public comments, that'd be great.
Our one and only public speaker is Mr. Rick Reese. Mr. Reese, you have five minutes, as this is a business item.
Welcome, Mr. Reese.
Hello, City Council. Always fun watching the votorama thing earlier. Kinda like NFL Draft or something. Anyways, uh, yeah. I, I very much support this resolution. I think California's problems aren't, aren't that we have too few Democrats representing us, representing us. I think we have too many, and I'll get into that in a little bit here. Prop Fifty, to me, is just a cynical power play by Governor Newsom and Democrats to perpetuate their power hold over California. They basically have a monopoly of power throughout the state. I mean, I've been up here before with you guys, telling you how they've taken away basically local control, you, you know, stripping you of being able to vote on zoning and stuff like that. This is just, this is in the same vein as that. They are taking power away and concentrating it up in Sacramento. We are, we already have super majorities in the state legislature. And our California congressional delegation is a super majority of Democrats as well. I mean, how much do they want? Hundred percent? Are we gonna be like North Korea here? You know, this is, this is, you know, uncalled for. Newsom and Azok have a hundred percent control. And, you know, it's almost like they're trying to, trying to shut off political dissent. And if anything, you know, for everything that Democrats like to talk about diversity, if you ask me, this is anti-diversity, you know? Is, is every acre, square acre of California, does it have to be like San Francisco? I mean, we have different values here, we have different customs, we have different experiences here. The, the area here has a different history. You can't take a state as big as California with forty million people and try to turn them all into widgets, single-minded widgets. This is, this is not, if anything, this is anti-diversity. There's nothing diverse about this. As much as they like to talk about diversity, this is totally against diversity. Our community has, our community has, has strongly always embraced private enterprise, small businesses, capitalism. We, we like capitalism here because of our proximity to, to the Camp Pendleton and all the Navy bases. We're, we're very pro-military here, very supportive of military veterans. Lot of law enforcement like to live here. I'm retired law enforcement. But we have, we have Border Patrol that, that operate here, Border Patrol lives here. I, I know, I know a number of federal agents, but, you know, cops like to live here. This is a good place to get away from the crime and raise decent families. As well as our first responders, our firefighters, this is a good area. And it has, it's normal. It has normalcy here. We have, we have kinda traditional, normal values here. That's, that's all people want. We want, you know, we want our private property rights, and we wanna have our individual freedom. So I, I just, you know, I just urge you to vote for this resolution, oppose Proposition Fifty. And again, I just leave you with, with the, with that same thought that I began with. Our problem here in California isn't that we have too few Democrats, you know, representing us, running the state. If you ask me, I think we have too many. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. Mr. Mayor, that concludes all public comments. And I'm happy to turn the rest of the staff report over to Mayor Potem Alexander.
All right, thank you very much. As you know, Proposition Fifty was recently placed on the November 2025 ballot. Proposition Fifty would allow California to temporarily use new legislative-drawn congressional district maps for election 2026 through 2030. If passed in November, it would replace the current congressional maps, drawn by the state's Independent Civilian Redistricting Commission, with new lines. This is why I am opposed to Proposition Fifty. It is setting up a temporary system to allow the legislation to draw lines instead of the independent commission that was implemented by the people. For this reason and other, other benefits in California, it's directly, sorry, I apologize. We have to think about what is best for Temecula. The truth is that Temecula has benefited for many years under the existing representation of a representative such as Ken Calvert and Daryl Isa. And they have done a great job helping our city directly here in Temecula. They have obtained federal funding for many projects to include the $50 million for the French Valley Interchange, and much more. We have intentionally and carefully built wonderful and great relationships, just similar to the ones that we just, we just went and talked with them. Our mayor just recently went over to DC. And we will continue to hope, and we hope to continue those, or those connections as well, and those relationships. I don't wanna change what we have. That is why I'm asking my colleagues to have this discussion. And I'd like for you to join me in opposing this proposition collectively as a council, along with other cities as well. If not, I'm hoping that some of my colleagues will oppose the proposition in their individual capacity. And I just wanna thank the council as well for bringing this, the opportunity to talk about this and have this discussion. As I said before, I'm looking at this directly as Temecula. I, I'm gonna take away the red, I'm gonna take away the blue, I'm gonna take away the purple, I'm gonna take everything else away. This is not something, I believe, that is beneficial for our city. And I believe it's something that may just hinder our city as well, for sure. I'd like to turn it over, if possible, to the mayor to just maybe bring up some of the things. I know, I believe one of our council members had talked about DC and the interactions between Congressman Daryl Isa and Congressman Calvert. And so, Mayor, if you could just give a little bit of input about your discussions with them and how that looked, that'd be fantastic.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you very much, Mayor Potem. So like Mayor Potem Alexander stated, I went to DC last week with city staff, and I'll hit on it later during council comments, but we met with our congressman, Daryl Isa, and Ken Calvert. And we asked them about Prop Fifty, and they were both staunchly against Prop Fifty, you know? It makes sense, right, because this affects them, affects them directly and affects our representation. So both our congressmen were against Proposition Fifty. They both, in their private and public capacity, stated they're against Prop Fifty. But for me, like the Mayor Potem said, and, and our city clerk hit on, the independent commission was implemented in 2008. And it could be argued that prior to 2008, and prior to that independent commission, the reason that was implemented was because there was a lot of backroom partisan gerrymandering that went on. And what that did in 2008 is it ended all of that. It created districts that essentially gave the voters a fair chance at having representation that reflected their communities. It ended the partisan battle. And prior to that, in 2018, with this independent commission redrawing the maps, they had over a hundred public meetings, they had voters describe their community, the environment, the infrastructure, their economies. And that's how these independent maps were drawn originally. So I understand, you know, our governor and the state response, right? I understand the, the argument for Prop Fifty, where it's, it could be seen as a democratic decision by the voters to temporarily reassess redistricting efforts that balance out what the governor and other states are doing. And I understand the, the, the other side, or that side's viewpoint of wanting to rebuttal Texas, for instance. I mean, it's literally called the Election Rigging Response Act, right? So this is a response to what other states are doing. So I understand where they're coming from. But although I understand where they're coming from, I fundamentally disagree with mid, to re, sorry, to redraw the lines in a mid-cycle. You know, I think, I honestly think if this was pitched out of the blue, if our governor and our state legislatures just said, hey, we wanna do this out of the blue without anything else and not looking at any other states, I would argue that an overwhelming majority of Californians would disagree with this. But it, since it is in retaliation to what they are doing, that is what makes it okay for that viewpoint. But again, I truly believe that an overwhelming of Californians would vote against this if this was, if it had nothing to do with any other state. Because this redistricting will, in fact, silence millions of voters. And this would replace the independent commission that, who drew maps. And they drew the maps by that independent commission and not by legislatures. So I fundamentally am against giving legislators even more power to protect and gain seats. It's pretty simple for me. Our voters voted for a fair, nonpartisan, nonpartisan redistricting in 2008. To me, this is simply revenge politics. It's not a, a model for responsible government. I believe that this is something that has to be dealt with at the national level. I think our U.S. representatives need to introduce something to essentially ban mid-cycle and mid-decade redistricting nationwide. And Prop Fifty is not the answer. With that being said, Mayor Potem, I am against Prop Fifty. I'm willing to sign on to this resolution. But at the end of the day, whatever the, the voters decide, we will accept as a city, and we will work with whatever state legislature we have in front of us. Thank you very much, Mayor Potem.
Thank you, Mayor. And, and I, I wanna back everything that you said, and maybe not everybody has an understanding. There's, there's so much information out there. So what's supposed to happen is, is every ten years, when we have the census, is when the redistricting of the maps occur. And we did that five years ago. We sat on this dais, and we redistricted our cities as well. Everybody's supposed to redistrict. So what's happening is, is mid-cycle, when we're talking about that mid-cycle redistricting, they decided to just take this upon themselves and not do this with this commission, this committee, and also mid-year. And so I agree, you know, listen, the voice of the people is the most important, but we also have to be able to have informed voters as to what exactly we're voting on, too. And there's a lot of information that's gonna be going out there. So for us, the reason I'm doing this also is to make sure that our voters and the people here in our city are informed. And so I wanna even, depending upon what happens here tonight, today, I just wanna encourage everybody out there to do your homework. Look at both sides, have an understanding, meet with people, meet with, you know, your city council members here, meet with your neighbors, have those discussions. Because at the end of the day, we have to figure out what is best for Temecula. As, as a city council, our priority is what is best for our city. And then as far as for the five of us, we have to move forward to take a look at what and how we are gonna do best in being able to build up the city and build up our community. You know, one other thing I just wanna throw out there before I put this out to the rest of the council. You know, our state in itself is in such red, meaning we're, the state in itself is really struggling financially. Everybody knows it. There's not one person, I think, in California who can really say, from a state level, that they're not struggling. But yet they're willing to put out another $250 million to pay for this. Two-hundred-and-fifty million. There's a lot other places that this can go to better our state. And so there's areas, I believe, that even as a city here, that we could be able to use some of that funding to be able to do things like improve our traffic, help with homelessness, help with quality of life. But yet they wanna put this towards this. So my opinion- So my opinion is this should have been a movement from the people. If the people of, of California wanted this, the people of California should have asked for it. But instead, they turned it upside down and now we're doing it this way mid-year cycle. So that is why I'm opposed to this. I'm really hoping that again, we can take a look at what is best for Temecula as a city council and, and nothing more at this point. So I'd like to throw it over to the rest of my council for my other three colleagues as well, please.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protam. Councilmember Stewart?
I only have one comment. Two wrongs don't make a right. So that's, that's where I sit. This is, this is wrong in Texas, it's wrong in California. So just, I, I'm definitely in favor of a, a no vote for the city of Temecula because our, our representation here has been stellar. You know, we're talking almost 100 million dollars we've gotten from the federal government for projects. So, you know, we've been very well supported. If that would have been a Democratic Congress, I would have been just as happy to get 100 million dollars from them. So it, it really doesn't matter to me. But again, two wrongs don't make a right, so.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Stewart. Councilmember Ron?
Yeah, just, I mean, well said, and thank you for bringing this item forward. Thanks for the comments because I agree with everything you all are saying. This is, this is gerrymandering. You know, it, it's stunning to me that our government is having a conversation about breaking the law and then asking the voters of the state of California to agree with them to break the law. Plenty of court cases throughout our country have addressed the issue of gerrymandering over the years, found many jurisdictions in violation of just that and violations of the Voting Rights Act. And we're just dismissing, you know, the 2008 law that created the independence, a map driven by legislators, not, I have no idea where they got the data from to do this because you rely on the 20, you know, what was it, the 2020 census data that we did this in the last time? And then we're not going to update that data for another 10 years, right? So in the middle of this, we know post-COVID and during COVID, there is a substantial shift in California's population. What are they basing any of this information on? Because we haven't completed a census. So I'm just, I'm just stunned because are we even meeting reasonable expectations of what these representative districts are supposed to encompass as far as just the basic population standard? I, you know, without any of that data, it is just a complete guess as to how these maps are, are being driven. So, so that to me is just, just absolutely stunning. The floodgates could get open pretty wide on this and that's my other concern. Does this let us do this in the future? So the next time we do this, can we just draw whatever map we five want to and just say, well, here we go, Temecula, this advantages us as a council. We're not going to be open, we're not going to be transparent. I mean, you know, when we did our last district maps, imagine if that were done. If we did no analysis, if we provided no real data, we provided no real link to the census information, we just said, this is what we all want and we're going to make sure that it advantages each of us individually to maximize our potential to be elected in the future. I, you know, I mean, that's exactly what we're talking about and I just, it just blows me away. Congressman Calvert will basically lose a district in this process. And agree with him or not, he's, he's a bit of a cardinal in Washington DC. The amount of institutional knowledge and weight he carries as a senior elected official at the Capitol has fundamentally changed our communities in Southwest Riverside County for the better, largely because of his ability to bring real dollars to things like transportation projects, flood control projects, things that he has championed for, for years. And the same can be said for our Representative Issa as well. You know, the, these two gentlemen are going to face, I mean, I don't know what happens with Calvert's district, he just doesn't run. I mean, it's stunning to me that this, this even happens at this point. Issa, of course, is being disadvantaged in his district as well, flipping the numbers to make sure that he, he gets unseated, intentionally unseated. This just blows me away. I question where the statesmanship and the professionalism went in, in politics. We used to vote for our, you know, higher office elected folks because of that and now we're just, you know, watching people erode our, our, our constitution and, and our rights in, in California. Last thing I'll agree with here is the cost. You know, we, we talk about housing, we talk about transportation dollars, we talk about all the things that we could be working on and should be working on in California. And a quarter billion dollars going to an election, just, it doesn't make any sense. So I'm, I'm happy to join with you in, in opposition for this and, and would really encourage others to take a, take a careful look at this and, and make their own decisions. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Ron. Councilmember Schwank?
Yeah, thank you very much. So you guys make a bunch of great points, right? Like, what a world that we're living in right now. You have a state legislature in Texas that just redraws maps, like, just does it. They didn't go to people. And then you get this sort of response from California, it's like, oh, well, we have a redistricting commission, so we have to go to the people to sort of figure this out. Man, what a world. I don't like it one bit, to be honest with you. I think it's, I don't think it's good for democracy as a whole in our country, let alone, you know, here at the state. You know, having said that though, this is like, this is a pretty, like, we had at one point, we had a conversation about, you know, like, stay in your sandbox and you mentioned red and blue. This is like a partisan deal right now. Like, this is like making things worse, right? It's not bringing us together, it's making things worse. And I think we may be surprised at the results with it, especially, you know, at the, at this election, and we might sort of be shocked to, to see maybe not everyone's in favor of something like this. But they are responding to, you know, gerrymandering, which going back years and years and years is a real issue. You know, even if you look at some of the districts that the commission drew, you're like, really? Like, okay, I guess. So yeah, it's, it's a huge issue. You know, at the end of the day, the voters are going to vote on this and, and whatever happens, happens. But Councilmember Ron, you bring up some good points about, you know, does this open the door for us? You know, because can you imagine if we just drew a few maps and like, the people be beaten down the door, like, how in the world did you come up with this? But like, I think at the end of the day, for me, like, I'm, I'm probably not going to support this, just because I think as a city, we should probably just stay out of it. Something as contentious as this, I think we should just stay out of it. But, I mean, clearly there's, there's support here for it and, and, you know, we'll file that resolution away and, and see what happens in November. But I think at the end of the day, it's really, it's really incumbent upon people to do their homework. You know, and not listen to the, the millions and millions and millions of dollars of political ads they see on the news or on TV or social media and really read and try to understand what's happening, not just for this, but for every election. And become more informed in, within your networks and try to learn about politics and what's actually happening, so. With that, yeah, thanks.
All right, Mayor Protam, would you like to make a motion on item number 17?
Yes, Mayor. So I'd like to make a motion that we form a resolution to oppose Proposition 50 for our city.
I'll second. Councilmember Stewart will second that motion. Let us vote. And item number 17, adopt resolution opposing Prop 50, passes four to one with Councilmember Schwank voting no. With that, we will flip over back to the front of our agenda here and we will revisit the presentations. So we will start off with our first presentation, which is the Certificate of Merit from the American Red Cross to Mr. Thomas Mann. Welcome, Mr. Mann. It's good to see you back here as well.
Good afternoon. I'm Lois Beckman and I'm the Executive Director for the American Red Cross serving Riverside County. And I'm excited to be with you today to present a special lifesaving award. The National Lifesaving Awards Program is an American Red Cross Training Services Program that recognizes and honors individuals and teams who save or sustain a life using first aid skills. American Red Cross Training Services teaches lifesaving skills to an average of more than nine million people each year, including thousands of individuals in our Southern California region. The ultimate goal of all of the training is that when needed, it can be successfully put into action and that's just what today's here honoree has done. Today, I'm proud to honor Thomas Mann, who put his training into action when it was needed most, and I'm happy to tell you his story. In July 2024, Thomas, a certified Red Cross lifeguard, water safety instructor and lifeguard instructor, was on his way to work as a lead lifeguard with the City of Temecula Aquatics Team. Thomas stopped at a gas station and while parking, he was notified of an unresponsive person surrounded by a crowd of people. He immediately assessed the scene where he saw an unconscious man on the ground bleeding from the back of his head and not breathing. Without hesitation, Thomas grabbed his hip pack and immediately began performing CPR. He provided continuous care until EMS arrived and took over medical care. Using his Red Cross training and knowledge, Thomas was able to help save the man's life. For Thomas's heroic actions, the Red Cross had the honor of presenting him with a Good Samaritan Hero Award at our Inland Empire Heroes Awards this past spring. We're proud to recognize Thomas again and award him with a certificate of merit, lapel pin, and medal and lifesaving award. This is one of the highest awards given by the Red Cross to someone who sustains a life by using skills and knowledge learned in a Red Cross Training Services course. Thomas, your actions exemplify the highest degree of concern of one human being for another who is in distress. So on behalf of the American Red Cross, thank you for your heroism and thank you to the City Temecula Aquatics Division for nominating Thomas. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. I'd like to thank my family for showing up to support me. Also, my supervisors, they've been great throughout the whole, just my entire process working for the city, which has been absolutely amazing. Also, thank you guys for having me here, spending a little bit of time with me, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations again. It was truly an honor to be here today to present this award to you. So here's your pin and your medal.
Thank you so much.
And your certificate. And if we can get a photo with the council?
Absolutely, we can all come on down. Thomas, I have to ask, are you going into a police academy or fire academy? It looks like you've got some?
Yeah, October, start the Riverside County Sheriff's Academy.
Amazing.
The haircut.
Yay!
We will come down to you.
Perfect, don't worry.
Do you want me to?
If you want to hold it up, that's fine by me.
Do you want me to do it this way? Present that pin?
Some presence? A lot of cameras.
You like our photos?
I guess so.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Well done again, Mr. Mann, that's pretty amazing. And good luck to you at the Riverside County Sheriff's Academy. I'm sure that will be a fun and entertaining time for you.
Sure will be.
We'll be happy, or we'll be glad to have you back in Temecula one day, patrolling our streets.
Hope so.
It'll be an honor. It'll be a full circle story. All right, we will move on to our second presentation of the day, which is the Proclamation for National Preparedness Month. Mr. Alfred, come on down.
Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and read that for you. Whereas National Preparedness Month, occurring each year in September, creates an opportunity for every resident of our great city to prepare their homes, businesses, and our community for any type of emergency, from potential terrorist attacks and other man-made events to natural disasters. And whereas investing in the preparedness of ourselves, our families, neighbors, and businesses can reduce fatalities and economic devastation in our community and within our nation. And whereas injury and loss of life is avoidable when individuals take responsibility for preparing themselves, their families, and their community. And whereas emergency management programs, such as its Community Preparedness Backpack Program, Temecula Alert, the Federal Emergency Management Agency's Ready Campaign, and Citizen Core Program, along with federal, state, local, tribal, territorial, private, and volunteer agencies collaboratively work together to increase public activities in preparing for emergencies and to educate individuals on how to take action. And whereas the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, has announced the 2025 National Preparedness Month theme of preparedness starts at home. And whereas all citizens of the City of Temecula are encouraged to prepare an emergency communication plan, participate in citizen preparedness activities, and visit the city's emergency management website for important preparedness tips and information. Now therefore, you, Mr. Mayor Brendan Kalpas, on behalf of the City of Temecula, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2025 to be National Preparedness Month and call on all government agencies, private organizations, and the people and businesses to develop their own emergency preparedness plan and work together towards creating a more prepared society.
Well said, Madam City Clerk. I always love how long those are. Mr. Alfred, we would love to hear a few words from you.
I'll keep it brief because I have a brief after this. I just wanted to say thank you for recognizing emergency management and the efforts to go into preparing our community and invite everybody here to come out this Saturday from 9:00 to 1:00 here in front of City Hall for our first combined Community Health and Preparedness Expo.
We look forward to seeing everyone out there and I don't think most of the people in the city understand how much Mr. Alfred does and his emergency management team does. So we are just so grateful for everything that you do. That is just a very small snippet of what you do, so we are very appreciative. I know all my colleagues and city staff are as well. So thank you for everything that you do and we'll see you at that fair.
Thanks, sir.
All right, we will move on to our final presentation, which is by Southern California Edison and the Office of Emergency Management. Mr. Alfred, are you staying up there?
I am.
I think so. This is just a presentation, correct? Want me to stay down here?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a presentation. You can go ahead and come on back up to the dais. And Mr. Alfred, why don't you go ahead and introduce your friends there so that they can give the presentation? I actually recognize one of them in her new role, so welcome, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, City Council, city staff. With me, I have Ms. Eileen Flores and as you guys know Andrea Marsh from Supervisor Washington's Office, who is now working for Southern California Edison and one of their grid technicians, I think I got that right?
Engineering manager.
Engineering manager from SoCal Edison. And we're going to go through a joint PSPS and update brief on where we have come since the January 2025 PSPS out, outages during the LA Firestorm.
Thank you. I will kick it off. He stole a little of my thunder, but I'm still going to read my notes. Good afternoon, Mayor Kalpas and members of the council. My name is Andrea Marsh and I am your new Government Relations Manager for Southern California Edison. And while I'm new to the role, I am not new to the community. I come from Riverside County's Third Supervisory District Office and look forward to continuing to work with you and partner with the City of Temecula in my new role. Today, I am here with my colleagues to go over our wildfire mitigation plan update and talk about public safety power shut offs, which we all remember from January where de-energization was necessary due to the extremely dangerous fire conditions that we were seeing across the region. So I'm going to kick it off seamlessly with a look at our service area. So if I could direct your attention to the map, you'll see that 27% of SCE's service area is designated by the California Public Utilities Commission and CAL FIRE to be high fire risk area, which we call HFRA. 14,000 miles of our, of our overhead distribution and transmission lines, that's over there on the left-hand side of the screen, are in HFRA, along with over 300,000 of our power poles and towers. So if I were to zoom in on the map here, you could see City of Temecula. And that blue dot is the center, center of the city. And as you can see, we are surrounded by high fire risk area. Yellow is the tier two high fire risk area and that's over there on the left-hand side of the screen, are in HFRA, along with over 300,000 of our power poles and towers. So if I were to zoom in on the map here, you could see City of Temecula. And that blue dot is the center, um, center of the city. And as you can see, we are surrounded by high-fire risk area. Yellow is the Tier Two high-fire risk area, and orange is the Tier Three. So you could see why this conversation is very pertinent to our community. Every two years, uh, to the California Public Utilities Commission, SCE submits the wildfire mitigation plan. We continue to invest heavily in resiliency measures, including targeted underground, um, covered conductor, clearing vegetation near power lines, um, inspecting equipment routinely for repairs and maintenance. This is all done to reduce the risk of wildfire, um, caused by utility equipment and the impacts of public safety power shut offs. So, talked a lot about public safety power shut offs. We're going to dig a little bit deeper into that. This is when we temporarily shut off power during dangerous weather conditions to prevent our electric system from becoming the source of ignition. These safety shut offs are a measure of last resort and are intended to keep all of us safe. The CPUC authorized PSPS back in 2012, but SCE didn't officially begin using it as a tool until 2018. Um, and again, we only use this, um, during periods of high winds, typically accompanied by dry vegetation and low humidity. When the conditions are present, fire could spread rapidly. PSPS reduces the risk that, uh, winds could cause flying debris to hit our lines or damage to our equipment and cause a fire. While disruptive and frustrating to our customers, it's one of the many strategies, um, as part of the wildfire mitigation plan, which is approved by state regulators. That being said, we're always looking to, uh, improve and look closely at ways to reduce PSPS de-energization, um, with increased hardening and enhanced monitoring and assistance for customers during the disruption caused by this critical safety tool. We use quantitative and qualitative tools, um, to determine when a shut off is needed, um, like the wind speed, dead fuel moisture, and humidity levels among others. Uh, now I'd like to pass it to someone who's much more of an expert than myself, um, Eileen Flores, who will walk us through some of the actions that Southern California Edison takes, um, when a public safety power shut off might occur.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, and city staff. Um, as Andrea said, my name is Eileen Flores with Southern California Edison. And before I start, I do want to acknowledge that we understand that the frustrations, um, that our cities had, along with our customers, um, during the January PSPS. We know that our communication tools and notifications did not perform as they intended. Um, we know that our website was a source of frustration for many, and once those concerns were shared with us, we immediately started looking at ways to improve it. And I know that, um, we've taken action to make sure that it does perform better. Um, and also, we are still always, um, looking for your feedback if there are other ways we can improve the notification and communication process. Um, I think some, most of you are familiar with our PSPS notification timeline. Um, what we do is about four to seven days before we see some type of, um, windstorm or some type of, um, weather system that's coming through that may have an impact on our system, we'll real, we'll start planning for a potential PSPS. Um, as you all know, weather kind of has a mind of its own, and it could drastically change at a moment's notice, um, but we do try our best to try to inform you of a potential PSPS as soon as we can. Um, there may be instances where we may not be able to do that because the weather has changed, and there is a potential to have little to, um, no notification, um, depending on the weather conditions. Um, as Andrea mentioned, our, really, our goal is to reduce the potential for our equipment to be the source of ignition. Um, like I said, this is our ideal, um, timeline. Um, we have made changes. Originally, we used to notify, um, customers two days in advance. We are now notifying them of a PSPS three days in advance when we're notifying our government partners so that they have more time to prepare for a potential PSPS. Um, and then two days in advance, um, we will send them a notification, kind of a reminder that, um, we are still in a period of concern. And then one day ahead, we will send them another notification. We used to send, um, the expected shut off notices, um, on a regular basis when it's one to four hours before a shut off. We will just send that once now, when we know that there is that, um, more of an immediate potential for a shut off, because we did get complaints that we were sending too many notifications. Um, so we've reduced that. And then also, we will notify, um, folks when the power has been shut off. I know that most folks will say, well, I'm at home, I know my power's off, but there are some folks that may be on vacation or at the office, so they want, we want them to be aware of that. And then also, we will let them know when power has been restored, um, just for their information. Like I said, they may be at work, so we really want them to know about when power has been shut off and when it's back on. We've also enhanced some of our PSPS customer programs and resources. Um, I do want to acknowledge and think that the City of Temecula has, um, is one of our contract, um, uh, Community Resource Center, um, partners. Um, so we do have two locations in the City of Temecula that are now designated as a Community Resource Center or a CRC. Um, so we will, uh, work with the city if we need a location for that. Um, and then we've also partnered with more community-based organizations to assist with things, um, such as food loss, like if they are in need of food. We've been working with some of the, um, food pantries. Um, also, I want to encourage you, if you could help us get the word out to your residents, um, if they do need assistance during an emergency, to please call 211 before an emergency. They will do an emergency plan, um, with, um, with residents so that they're prepared before an emergency. Please don't wait, um, you know, when we're in the middle of an emergency. This is now the perfect time, um, to contact 211 if you need immediate, or if you will need assistance during an emergency. And then we also have some programs that are available. We have, um, customer resiliency equipment. We have a critical care backup program, um, so that if you know someone that is reliant on, um, medical equipment that uses electricity, we do have a program for income-qualified, um, customers for a free battery, um, backup. And then we have, um, rebates and other resiliency equipment programs. And then just some of the numbers, um, here on some of the wildfire mitigation work that we've been doing. We have more than 6,400 miles of covered conductor, um, that helps so that during high winds, in case there are trees that blow into our lines or some type of foreign object goes in there, you know, that'll reduce the risk of our lines being a source of ignition. And then we, of course, do our, um, vegetation management, where we've trimmed over two-and-a-half million, um, trees and other vegetation, um, such as weed abatement, removing, um, other, you know, um, vegetation that's near our fire lines. And we continue to do inspections. We have weather stations and high-definition cameras. Um, so as I mentioned, the City of Temecula has two Community Resource Centers, and we have a total of 70 throughout our service area. Um, and then we've deployed over 1,700 critical care backup batteries to our medical baseline customers. Um, now I'm going to hand it over to Adam.
Thank you, Eileen. Good afternoon. My name's Adam Stadnik. I am the Engineering Senior Manager for the San Yacinto Region Field Engineering Department at Southern California Edison. There are 12 regions throughout Edison's service territory. We are just one. Uh, we are small but proud. We extend from Marino Valley as far south as Temecula, uh, up to Corona-Temesco Valley, out to Idahwild to the east. Uh, just three slides that I want to cover today. Uh, you heard from my colleagues about the, the why, the burning platform, quite literally, uh, why we need to do PSPS, why we need to improve the circuitry, uh, at all times here at, in Southern California Edison's territory. Uh, this first slide, uh, is a, a, an AI-generated representation of a neighborhood, much like you would find here in Temecula. Uh, a question that we get a lot is, hey, why is my power off? Why is my neighbor still on? I don't understand. Well, the circuitry that we have here at Southern California Edison, uh, is not, uh, by neighborhood, by neighborhood, by neighborhood. It is, in some ways, it crosses boundaries of neighborhoods. So your home, uh, within the part of your neighborhood may be served on one circuit, your neighbors may be served on another circuit. So if one is impacted by a PSPS event and others aren't, you will see that difference. So we just wanted to highlight that here, uh, as a, hey, why is my neighbor on and I am off? Uh, we recognize that that's a hardship. Uh, you probably get calls about that as well. The next two slides that we have, we have two circuits here. I just wanted to, uh, illustrate, uh, kind of the, uh, the challenges that we have with our circuitry, uh, in our territory with respect to the high-fire areas. Some of these circuits are sourced in high-fire areas, some of these source, are sourced outside of high-fire areas. Uh, this one that you see on the screen right now, the ZVO 12 KV Circuit out of Myriad, a substation, uh, is, you can see it's to the west of the 15, but it borders this high-fire area, uh, Tier Three, as was defined earlier. And there is a little tiny segment of that circuit that traverses into that high-fire area. So if we see wind speeds that are going to, uh, invite us to call a PSPS event, uh, that whole circuit could be suspect to shut, being shut off. Uh, you might be in an area that's not windy on the circuit, and you might be shut off, and you might wonder why. Well, because the boundary, uh, also covers area of the circuit. What are we doing about that? Well, in this instance, what we can do about that is install control technologies, uh, actual switches that can open the lines in that particular area of the circuit to shut just that portion that's in the HFRA off, meanwhile keeping everybody else online and hot. So that's one example of something that we're doing here in, uh, Temecula. But you also have a lot of rural areas in Temecula. This particular circuit, the Paco Ni, is out in wine country. It's sourced out of Pabas Sub, uh, and you can see it is a majority in the high-fire area, Tier Three. Um, but then there is that area to the west. You can see a little bit of the blue lines there. The blue lines are kind of where the circuit is going. Uh, they are outside of the high-fire area. Now, in order to, uh, isolate that area, and this is the particular challenge with this particular circuit, in order to isolate that area, you would have to put a switch right at the edge of the orange boundary there, the high-fire area. Uh, but then where is the power sourced for the circuit? It's deep inside the high-fire area. So this might be a situation where it's, uh, without having circuitry on the opposite side of the Paco Ni, we might be suspect to lose a majority of the circuit. So I just wanted to present these things to you today to exemplify, you know, number one, uh, it is a challenge, it is a hardship that everybody in these territories face when it comes to PSPS. Number two, uh, you can see the complexity of the circuitry that is involved in delivering power to our customers from the electric utility standpoint. And number three, what are some of the things that we are actually doing about it, uh, to improve the life for our customers? Uh, one thing that we were asked to do early there, earlier this year, was look at a list of all of the circuits in our region. Uh, this was asked across the entire service territory. We had approximately 167 circuits that my team specifically was looking at, uh, with respect to HFRA boundaries, and where have we covered the lines already? Where have we buried the lines already? Where do we have appropriate switching to segmentize our circuits? And what could we do to improve the geometry and the complexity of the circuits that we have? So we have gone through that list, and I'm proud to say that, you know, we looked through all 167, uh, many of which were in the Temecula area, and we have found instances of, uh, data inconsistencies where we have sent troublemen out to patrol lines and determine, hey, the map says that it's uncovered, so the threshold should be this, but now we have physically verified, no, these are actually covered. We have done the work. Uh, but we have also identified instances of, that should be covered, but we need to still cover that. So we're in the process of actually putting those balls in motion as well. So I will pass it back to my colleagues at this time. Uh, if you have any questions, please find me, and we can have a conversation. Thank you.
I just wanted to provide a quick update on what we, as a city, have done in collaboration with our partners since the January events. As a quick reminder, we did have two back-to-back PSPS events in January, one being the week of seven to nine, and the other one being January 13th to 15th. These were both unprecedented wind events that happened in the SoCal region, triggering these planned and unplanned outages. And also, that event was a trigger point for the LA Firestorm. We met in March for an executive team staff after-action review, and then met on June 17th with the city, SoCal Edison, and our school district partners. Out of these meetings, we've done a comprehensive rewrite and update to our current PSPS plan, where we've incorporated those corrective actions following the coordination meeting so that we can have more seamless, uh, work and transition as we go through the PSPS Our mapping, we originally had 21 circuits, and after sharing that information with SoCal Edison, we found out that we increased by 25 and have a total of 46 segmented circuits within the City of Temecula. Our maps, which are depicted here, don't really depict the segments of each one of those zones, so when we refer to this, such as this is the Hunter Circuit Map, this is the Hunter Circuit Map Service Area, and through another website that I'll share, we're able to log in and look at that respective area, and then we're able to break out the specific segments, which is going to help us in terms of planning and notifications for the community. Our updated maps have been, uh, put on our SharePoint site on the P drive and are now in our Microsoft Teams EOC Management site as well. Our city dashboard has been updated by our IT partners, and this allows us to highlight that service area and give us a quick impact of what public safety resources are affected, what schools, what city facilities, and any critical infrastructure that we have identified. And this is what's shared with our executive team as where, as well as the mayor and the city council. The new website that we received, we're using, is called the Distributed Resources Plan External Porter, or DR PREP. As you can see, this is just a snapshot of each of the individual segments in all of the zones that represent the southern area for Temecula. So we now have the ability to drill down and look at a specific segment within a large zone, such as the Luiseno Zone, which is the largest circuit that we have in the city. So we can drill down, identify our impacts, and then we can be able to respond more effectively. For our areas of improvement, we really looked at how we can increase and effective communications with our business community. Meeting with, uh, the president and CEO of the Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce, they're going to help us, and we're going to share this information and help get that out to our business community on those effects and what we, as a city, are doing to help mitigate any of these actions, along with working with, uh, Visit Temecula Valley, so that the impacts to our, uh, visitors and through the hotels, that can be arranged as well. Under customer resiliency equipment, we are going to continue to take the information that SoCal Edison shares with us, and we have placed it on our website. So we are continuing to push that out on the Critical Care Battery Backup Program, the In-Event Loan Program, those rebates, and as I mentioned, they've all been added to our OEM website. Under community support, as they mentioned earlier, we have now agreements with SoCal Edison for two Community Resource Centers within the city. One of them specifically being the CRC, the other one being the Mary Phillips Senior Center. When requested, they're going to let us know, and then we'll activate those locations to give the community someplace to go, where they're able to obtain information about the current outage, report any lost, um, food items they may have or any damages, and then also be able to get additional resources such as ice or even water. We're also working with the Access and Functional Needs Community, where we're going to take the specific critical care information, and we're going to map that. We're going to keep it to a point where we're not violating any HIPAA reactions or HIPAA laws, and we're simply going to have a name and an address. And with that name and an address, we can use our volunteers to do door-to-door wellness checks to continue to support the efforts that SoCal Edison does with their communications with that population on the front end. Currently, we're working with IT to plot that and develop a standard operating procedure for our volunteers so that if we need to put them on the road, we can definitely do that. In terms of employee and incident management team training, we have just finished our PSPS program. S P S video series, which now has four modules. We'll be ready to release that later this year and we will assign it to the staff of the incident management team so they are aware of what our plan is encompassing, what we expect them to do, what services we, as a city, can continue to provide during an outage and what we can't. Our reporting process, we've refined that. We have developed a sit rep that is specific to P S P S, which will streamline the information to our executive team and to the city council. And then we have further taken that information and turned it into an E O C checklist that we can use to ensure that we're hitting every item that we need to hit throughout the process because we know that when these things hit fast, they hit fast and we need to start making decisions as they affect the community. Because the ones in January, they came really quick and there was multiple different outages occurring across the city. So our next steps are going to be to publish our approved P S P S plan. We're going to continue with the development of an S O P for our Temecula Citizen Corps because they're going to be our eyes in the field and validate that information to make sure that those that might need help have been contacted. It's going to create relief for our public work staff because they will not have to go out and be the eyes in the field and check every single intersection and make sure, is it off or is it not? And then this increases our wellness checks and collaboration with our community. We're going to further map our A F N population on the medical and critical care medical baseline programs and then continue those partnerships with our city stakeholders in the delivery of our coordination and information for P S P S events such as Rancho Water, Temecula Valley Hospital, Temecula's Unified School District, and so forth. Barring any questions, that's the end of our brief.
Thank you very much. Mayor Potem?
Yes, sir. I do have a quick question. With the door-to-door connections, I know when we were in the meeting, we were talking, is CERT going to be leading that to be able to do the wellness checks? Or?
That effort will be led by the Office of Emergency Management, but it will be leveraged through the Citizen Corps volunteers.
Okay.
And those that are available, they may not be here at the time.
Wonderful, wonderful. I do have one more. It was for one of you. Ma'am, I forgot your name, I'm so sorry, in the middle. Question for you, could you explain a little bit, because this is something we learned in that meeting, is a little bit more of the battery backups? So people, for instance, who have maybe a disability, even to the point of needing a CPAP machine and are eligible, can you just explain how they do that in order to make sure that they are ready to go in the case of emergency that a P S P S happens again?
Yes, what I could also do is provide you with a flyer with the information. So customers would just need to contact S C E. They do have some qualifications that they need. They should be part of our medical baseline program. And that program in itself is also very helpful because it will increase their threshold for energy usage, so it'll help them with savings on their bill. So as long as they're part of the medical baseline program, they could, I think most everybody does qualify it, but they would qualify for the battery backup program. And it's really as simple as giving us a phone call or applying for it online. But I will make sure that that information is shared. We have a flyer on it so that it's easily available for your residents to sign up. But yes, it's for CPAP machines. I think that, you know, I think it may include for like refrigeration, for medication, so various different, you know, items that residents may need for medical reasons.
Wonderful. Thank you for that because that was some really great information that we picked up in that meeting, so I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for your time. We really are glad that we had that time to really get in-depth on a lot of the programs and why P S P S is happening. So thank you again.
Absolutely. Thank you, ma'am.
Councilmember Stewart?
I do have a question for one of the Edison people and maybe the gentleman because he deals with the shutdowns. So is there a maximum amount of time that Edison is allowed to shut someone off during these wind events? Because, you know, spoilage of food in freezers and whatnot, because I've experienced it where it's been out an entire day, so, and sometimes even longer. So is there, what's the recourse for a consumer who has a situation where they're completely shut down for an inordinate amount of time?
It's a fantastic question. It's a hardship when folks are shut down. My team is not necessarily on the operations side of pulling that trigger to shut people off. We are in the business of maintaining the grid, keeping the grid healthy so that hopefully we don't have to shut it off. In the event that it does get shut off, during a P S P S event, we are not allowed to re-energize the circuitry until we have had physical evidence. We've sent troublemen out to patrol the entire circuit to see that everything is as it should be before we flip that switch back on. Sometimes that can take a significant amount of time. We need to also let the winds die back down before we patrol. If it's at night, we can't patrol at night because obviously we can't see the lines. If there is a fire in the area, then we have to, you know, take note of that as well. To answer your question, I can't really accurately answer your question because you really never know in a wildfire situation what you're really up against.
Yeah, okay. So there really isn't a good answer for that?
There isn't really a good answer.
Okay, got it. I'm just verifying that fact. All right, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
What I can share with you, Councilmember Stewart, is that we do have a link that we can provide to the community that allows them to file a claim with SoCal Edison for the loss of food. I have a link that we can share with the community that they can use to file a claim for the loss of food.
Excellent. I'm going to hear it again. It's very important.
Okay.
Councilmember Schwenk?
Yeah, thank you. A couple of questions. So are there two battery loaner programs? There's like an in-event program and then there's a medical one. Are they separate? Okay, and so are these battery banks or are these like something you would use to charge your cell phone? So could someone run their, you know, refrigerator off of one?
I think the, so the battery backup program for medical baseline customers, that is actually something that you apply for and you keep it. So that is specifically for medical equipment. For the in-battery loan, I do have to get more information for you. That is a new program for us. So I will find out, you know, what is the capacity of that battery, whether, you know, if it can power a refrigerator or, you know, your phone. I think it's more than a phone, but I do need to double-check on that.
All right, yeah, I'd appreciate that because I hadn't seen that before and I know there's times, obviously, where you're like, oh, I need a little bit more than just, you know, to charge my phone or whatever. So that would be great. I appreciate that. And then, Michael, I have a question for you. And I do understand the sort of, there's an issue with you're communicating too much and you're not enough and it's like you're sort of never going to make anyone happy. I think we should always err on like we're communicating too much to folks. But this is with respect to the reverse 911 that we have. Is that something that we would use for one of these events? Do a reverse 911?
It's available for use should the city choose to go that method to increase their notifications. But with the notifications that SoCal Edison has, every person that has an electrical account is registered with their notification system. Ours is an opt-in system and currently we only have about 12% of our population that has opted in. So while it's a great service that we can provide, it's going to be limited in its reach due to those that have registered versus those that have not.
Yeah, I mean, and that makes sense. And I'm guessing, you know, some folks, they get a text message and others get an email that they maybe never check or whatever. So I know it's going to be tough to communicate with folks, which leads me to my next. Like I think at some point, and I've spoken with our city manager about this, that there, we should probably have an emergency management social media where you're, when these events happen, and not just these events, like, but just in general, that we're using that as a platform as well to push out. And then, you know, the more critical events then can get elevated to like the city of Temecula. You know, we'd all be pushing the same information as, you know, what Edison's pushing out. So the more touches, I think, the better and places like that, so. And that was just a comment, so thank you.
Also, I'd like to add that, you know, you mentioned how folks are getting information, whether it's email, text, or phone call. This is a great time to encourage customers to update their information. Sometimes the information that we have on file from them is really old because they moved into their home 25 years ago and they changed their phone number. And of course, we're not the first ones on their list like, oh, I should call Edison and update my information. Well, this is a reminder to please do that and you can select whether you want a text message, if you want, you know, automated call or an email. But you can also sign up for, someone can sign up even if they don't live in Southern California Edison's territory. Like my mom lives in P G and E territory and I'm signed up to get notifications if she's ever impacted by a P S P S at her home so that when, because I know she ignores them. So I get them for her and I will reminder, hey, Mom, check your text messages, you know, there's some important information from your energy provider. So I really want to encourage people to please update your information.
Yeah, I mean, that's important too because it's the planning ahead part that's important. If you know it's coming, you can charge your batteries, you can make sure, maybe you buy some ice or whatever you need to like really prepare so that you are resilient as an individual unit to sort of weather the shut-off. So, yeah, good stuff.
So for your, the high fire response zones, are those based off of the Cal State Fire Marshal's map as well or do you draw your own high fire areas?
They're usually based off Cal Fire and the C P U C maps.
Okay, thank you very much. No, well, thank you for being here. Thank you, Ms. Marsh. We look forward to working with you more and thank you for acknowledging the frustrations of our citizens here in Temecula specifically and thank you for asking for our continued feedback. I was actually on a telephone call during the fire season last year with Mr. Alfred and it was with you all and it was an elected officials briefing. And there were a lot of elected officials on there, I'm sure, as you heard across the state. And that was a very, I guess, feedback-driven phone call for all of you. But thank you again. And just a reminder, call 211 before the emergency takes place to plan for it. And if there's a way to just wrap up everything you guys said into a six-second reel to catch the attention span of the newer generations, that would be phenomenal. But thank you all for being here and thank you, Mayor Potem, for meeting with them and having them here. Absolutely.
I just want to add a few things. You know, first off, I want to thank you and your team. We had a great meeting. I know that initially this kind of all stemmed because being over in one of the businesses, we had tons of businesses around us and everybody was like, do I come into work? Do I not come to work? Are the lights on or the lights off? Do I have business? And it was just, we were really working as a community to say, hey, our lights got turned on, you should come back into work. And it was one of those things that we had realized, you know, not only for residents but for businesses, it was getting really challenging because people were losing money. You know, businesses were closing down. I had an eye doctor next to me and he's like, I don't know, he's like, I don't know if we're going to do well, you know, this month. And he was struggling. A lot of businesses were for those two weeks. But even though there was the challenge, I just want to just encourage everybody that we had this opportunity to come together to the table, to sit down again with the schools, with S C E, with the city. And I think, I want to thank staff, I want to thank Michael for having that, taking that opportunity because it was kind of a hard discussion because we were trying to learn each other and figure things out. And there was a lot of conversation, but the best part was is everybody listened to each other. And I listened to this presentation and I go, wow, where we were back in January and now here we're moving into, you know, nine months later or eight months later, we've come together collectively and done a great job putting this together. And so I just want to, again, thank you guys for listening. Thank you for hearing us and just again, thank you for staff for just taking this big step because there was a lot of things we learned and we're only going to get better as a community and as a state. So continue to do your great work. Thank you to everybody for all that you guys were doing and I just hope that next time it's a lot easier so that we don't have to have our staff running around trying to see what's on and off as well because I know that that was challenging, but you guys are doing a great job. So thank you and we encourage you to continue to do the great work you're doing.
Well said, M P T. We will move on to our Board and Commission reports. We'll start off with our Planning Commission, Commissioner Turley Trejo.
Welcome, everybody in the audience and those that are listening. Our Planning Commission meets on the first and third Wednesday, just so you know that. And our last meeting was last week on the 17th. Our commissioners, still on that one, Gary Watts, Fernando Solis, Bob Hagel, and Mark Watson, great group of commissioners. And we do reviews, make recommendations on topics, subdivisions, zone changes, plot plans, and we conduct legally required public hearings at each of our meetings. Thank you, next slide. So at our meeting last week, our first item was to allow for a type 47 license, which is spirits for the Temecula Korean BBQ located on Motor Car Parkway. And we do, as a commission, ask a lot of questions about this. It's not just a stamp of approval for anyone who applies for a type 47. And the owner was there, humble man, family, it's a family restaurant that's been there for over 20 years and his mom was running it before he is, so kind of cool. Anyway, there were no public speakers for this item and we did vote 5-0 to approve the application. Next slide. And then the second item that we had is actually Habitat for Humanity project. And you can see where the project is and it's right next to another project that was done for Habitat for Humanity, I think back in 2008. It's been a while. So we felt like this was a good project to have right there next to a previous project. So it is six units in two buildings and right there on First and Pujo Street. And there were no public speakers for this item and we also voted 5-0 to approve this project, Habitat for Humanity. Thank you. Any questions? Nope.
No, thank you very much. Thank you for not rubber stamping alcohol licenses.
That's right.
And we look forward to working more with Habitat for Humanity.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you very much. We will move on to our Ready Commissioner, Mr. Evan Topf.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, the Race Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Commission reviews the recommendations and makes recommendations on topics of diversity and inclusion within the city of, on its city events, services, programs, and policies and enhanced community relations. And it's comprised of Stacia Deutsch, myself, Lyman Leckers, Chairwoman Crystal Pastorian, Jackie Steed, and Denise Wilson. And we met September 11th and there we had presentations that included introductory comments from Chair Pastorian, a video outlining the importance and celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month, a presentation by Chair Pastorian regarding the census data and historical information, a video message from Supervisor Washington that also featured Supervisor Manny Perez, a video message from Councilmember Schwenk, and a reading of the proclamation by Chair Pastorian. Seven student clubs presented from four high schools in Temecula and 20 proclamations were requested and provided. Just so you know, Hispanic Heritage Month goes from September 15th through October 15th. And our next meeting, all are invited, November 3rd, it is our final Ready Commission meeting and that is November 3rd, 6:00 p.m. here in Council Chambers and we're celebrating Native American Heritage Month. Any questions, Mayor and City Council? Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you very much and we're looking forward to you and Mrs. Wilson and Mr. Leckers for taking off your ready hats and putting on your G-PAC hats. Looking forward to that. All right, we'll move on to our Public Safety Report with our Fire Chief, Mr. Crater.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, staff, and Temecula residents. I'm here to give you the monthly report for August 2025. Your fire department ran 899 calls in the city. 19 of those were fire-related calls, 77 traffic collisions, and 661 medical emergencies. Currently, we're up to 6,927 calls for the year and we'll break 10,000 calls this year for sure with four months left of numbers for you. Next slide. Pretty cool. I was driving by yesterday and seeing all these mothers walking with their kids, having a good time in Old Town, and they stopped by Station 12. This place is the mecca for community gatherings, especially folks that are interested in becoming firefighters. You're never too young to start, right? We want to capture the eye of our youth and give them something to point to. The guys down there, the guys and gals at Station 12 are truly ambassadors of Old Town. They keep an eye on it. So keep coming by. We will have more events this year. We will have more events this year for community outreach, so keep an eye out on the website and the city PIO website for that information. I don't have a slide for the other things that I have, but we did have some incidents in the city where our firefighters were able to, to make a difference. I want to point those out. And we had a structured fire down the street from Station 84 with reports on a, of a woman on a roof, and the house is on fire. Firefighters arrived, find a woman on the house, they threw a ladder to get her off, and they saved multiple pets. And I think this is, this is something to point out with our 4O staffing. Immediately, they were able to go inside, perform rescues, do searches, and they found this little girl's cat. She has autism. That's the only thing the whole family cared about, was this cat. And they were able to rescue the cat. They found it in a, under a bed upstairs, and when they brought that up, out to her, they didn't care about the house anymore. That, that was like amazing, right? Plus lizards and birds and all the other things they saved there. But the cat was number one. They were all safe. Great customer service by the fire department. I know the mayor showed up, and he actually knew the residents and was able to help out and pitch in, and he even started pulling hose. I don't know why, but he's a fireman, so it never goes away, even if you're the mayor of Temecula. Also, the tornado fire. That fire took off in the hills and the escarpment above Old Town, and as soon as it took off, it was out. You know, our goal is 10 acres or less with any, any wildland fire in the state, and we definitely achieved that on this fire. High level of response, all hazard, you know, fire department for the, the state. But not only that, Station 12, again, two state fire engines out of that station, and the, the air assault on that was amazing. I think we had four air tankers on it immediately, and then the ground crews following up with dozers and inline construction and, and hose lines. So, I know it, it went out, there was a, a warning in Old Town for possible evacs, but that was done in about 20 minutes. So, hats off to the response there, and thank you for the city for supporting the fire department all these years. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Chief, and thank you for all you do, and great collaboration between you and RSOs, as always, on those fires. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention Fire Chief Weiser out there in the crowd. Thank you for being here. It's always an honor to have the Riverside County Fire Chief in our presence. So, thank you again, Chief Crater. We will move on now to our public comments on non-agenda items. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do have public comments. We have a total of five public comments on non-agendized items. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes, as written in the rules of the agenda. First speaker is Pat Nelson, to be followed by Cabell Fregoso.
Welcome, Ms. Nelson.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, and, and staff, and members of the public. My name is Pat Nelson, and I have the honor of being here today to represent the Temecula Valley Women's Club as their president. I'm here today to keep our community in the know of what we are about as a club. We are currently in our 45th year as a nonprofit 501(c)(3). Little-known facts, at present, we are just over 50 strong and determined women who support the Temecula Valley communities. We are a part of a large group of women within the district, the state, and the General Federation of Women who work toward, work worldwide in their efforts to make things better, to give hope to families in need, as well as give scholarships for public high school students. We have five committees, Advocates for Children, from which two of our past members envisioned Safe, which is now run by the county, Arts and Culture, supporting our local theaters and schools throughout donations and our presence, Education, delving into knowledge for ourselves as well as for others, Environment, providing restoration of Southern California, protecting nature and how we can improve it by using new techniques and our time, and the Health and Wellness Committee, providing mastectomy kits and feeding seniors in low-cost facilities. Within these committees, we support more than 40 charities locally and worldwide. We donated more than $3.3 million in our 45 years and over 2.1 million hours from these wonderful women. You have probably heard of our annual fundraiser, our holiday home tour. It has been one of the most successful events in the fall. However, since COVID hit in the world, things have changed, and people in the past three years have become extremely hesitant in letting us move into their homes, decorate them, and allow the public in. So, we've gone to something a little bit different this year. We're now not only doing for the adult, we are having a family holiday festival. So, save the date, November 15th, 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. This year will be in the city of Murrieta. As you know, it is our valley that we represent, and we bounce back and forth between the two. So, check out our website, tbwc.com.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time is up. I do have the flyers here as well, and we will distribute them to all of council. Thank you.
And we can continue that conversation when I see you at 10:00 AM on Thursday to speak at your women's club. See you soon. Madam City Clerk, next public speaker.
Yes, it may be, the next speaker is Isabel Fregoso. Isabel? Okay. To be followed by Laurel Lamont.
Welcome, Isabel.
Hello. When does my time start?
As soon as you start talking.
Hi, my name is Isabel Fregoso, so thank you for letting me speak today, first off, although I don't know how honest that is of me to be saying thank you, because I have a little bit of bitterness in my heart. I wanted to start off also by saying I'm no Harvard graduate, and I definitely don't have a PhD in anything, but I did find that this was the appropriate place to address some personal matters, since this is where my nightmare of events have began almost three years ago. I'm currently homeless, and my civil rights have been violated repeatedly, going on almost three years now. I've faced discrimination for my mental health, which is a protected class, and I was intentionally placed into homelessness because steps were taken. I have faced violent oppression and opposition for exercising my First Amendment rights. One example would be when I was living in my car, where I was forced to limit my water intake because I didn't have access to a restroom during, you know, normal business hours. I was approved for $21 in food stamps despite me having zero income, me providing proof to the local DPSs office, as well as writing declaration statements to support this. I've been stripped of resources and even been prevented from seeking counsel to address these matters in court, so I felt it was appropriate to come here today to at least bring light to my situation. Today, I feel physically ill. I've been tormented psychologically, emotionally, and spiritually. I cannot fathom how someone would begin to advocate for themselves if they didn't even speak English in a coherent manner. I come to you as a US citizen because honestly, I think there's a lot of room for improvements for a lot of people in my type of situation, and there's a lack of resources and help and support. I believe that there are minorities such as myself who are often overlooked, undermined, and views as, viewed as problematic. I beg to ask, what if this was you, walking in my shoes, your mother, your daughter, where you felt alone, afraid, and you were being kicked when you were already down on the ground? Would you have something to say, or would you say nothing at all? I believe we're all created equal, and to turn a deliberate cheek to injustice, injustice, violence, and oppression goes against the very foundation that this country was built on. I don't believe what happened to Rosa Parks or Martin Luther King was just or okay, but it happened. Try to wrap it up real quickly. I basically just wanted to conclude by saying, if there was a war veteran who had his legs amputated, you wouldn't just tell him to suck it up and be okay. Not all wounds are visible, and my suffering is real, and I just hope that you guys will take steps to try to help improve and provide more resources for people who are in my type of situation.
Thank you. The next speaker is Laurel Lamont, to be followed by Rick Reese.
Welcome, Ms. Lamont.
All right, I'm back. Didn't think I was going to go away. Prop 50, we threw a lot of energy and time and homework into a state measure. Workforce representation and housing inclusivity. When is that going to be a priority? When is more homework going to be thrown into that? Classism is the enemy right now. Prop 50 is a distraction. We build and design for a particular class, and we exclude the rest. We have a Ready Commissioner who said affordable housing exists in Hemet. So, your workforce should live elsewhere, and we wonder why we have a homelessness When are we going to figure it out? When are we going to throw energy, time, and homework into learning and understanding this problem? 2017, I first spoke on this issue. I'm a single mom. I spent over $2,000 on an affordable apartment, four months of which were under construction. So, if there was a fire and I had used my renter's insurance, I probably wouldn't have What are we doing to resolve this and to build relationships between the homeowners who feel entitled to this city and the workforce that serves them? I also don't qualify for any of that government assistance and never have, because I make too much as a single mom. And I do the job that your two household incomes, or two people, just in general, in a family, right, two head of households, do I do as one. And I work, and I serve this community five days a week, on top of starting a nonprofit to advocate for the workforce. When will you? When will you answer that one question? My heart aches for that girl, that woman. I too had a brother who died on the streets. And you know what? Homeless people die, and nobody recognizes them. The world just moves on. When?
Thank you very much, Ms. Lamont. And it is important to note, we do have a Housing Town Hall coming up next month. We hope to see as many from the public there as possible.
The next speaker is Rick Reese, to be followed by our last speaker, Julie Paul.
Mr. Reese, welcome back to the podium.
Hello again. Obviously, recently Gavin Newsom signed a state law banning law enforcement from wearing masks. Now, this law, if you follow the news, it's really kind of directed towards federal agents, ICE, Border Patrol, although it's plainly unconstitutional because of federal supremacy, so it's kind of symbolism over substance. But in the meantime, you know, Newsom has slandered a lot of these federal agents as, quote, "secret police," and that kind of agitates a lot of activists into, you know, declaring them as fascists and racists and Nazis and Gestapo and everything else. And that, all that does is really serve to put a target on people's backs. And as you know, you know, just following the news here, these targets end up being, you know, a lot of police, conservatives, Republicans, Christians, Jews. You can see what happened on a lot of campuses lately and everything, and otherwise just normal patriotic Americans. I think the assassination of Charlie Cook, Kirk just a couple of weeks ago illustrates that. I think it's, it's worth noting that fascism has nothing to do with conservative ideology whatsoever. Conservative ideology advocates for small government. We like government like this, that's at the grassroots. This is the government that's closest to the people. Fascism is centralized government. It's, it, there's no freedom of speech, no individual rights, anti-religion. The state is the religion. People, people are, people are forced to worship the state. It's anti-capitalist, it's very corporatist, and it's, it's high taxes, very high taxes, lots of regulations and dictats. So, I'm going to circle back again, because the point I'm trying to make is, is that, coming back to our federal agents, our Border Patrol, ICE agents, specifically our Border Patrol agents, we have Border Patrol here in our community. I think they should be respected. I think they carry out important constitutional duties that's mentioned in the Constitution, drug trafficking, human trafficking, they stop the fentanyl. And I think as a city council, I think it would be great if you guys would do something to honor our local Border Patrol here, whether that's accommodation, a plaque, a golden key to the city. I just wanted to bring that up because of kind of how the state of things are, and I just would, I, I would like you to kind of think about that, maybe consider that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reese.
And, and our last speaker is Julie Paul.
Welcome, Julie.
Hi there. Good evening. I'm Julie Polly, and I came to introduce myself. I'm the new Government Affairs Director for the Southwest Riverside Association of Realtors. And I'm very excited to join a dynamic group as your local Realtor Association. My husband and I have lived in the Temecula Valley for over 20 years. My children went through Temecula Prep and graduated from there. I served on that school board for a while. I'm an ADVID Boy Scout volunteer. I've brought some scouts to city council meetings in the past. I go to church in Temecula, so this is my community. So, for those of us that do government affairs, it's really a treat to be able to really serve the community that you love and live. So, I'm really excited to join this team. Our goal is to, my goal, is to be a trusted stakeholder on housing. So, I was thrilled to hear at the beginning of the meeting that our board member Denise Wilson will be joining the General Plan Committee that, that you just now formed, and we're thrilled that we can have a voice on that. And I just look forward to working with the city of Temecula promoting housing, all types. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Julie. We're looking forward to working with you as well. Madam City Clerk, do we have any more public comments?
Mr. Mayor, that concludes all comments for the balance of the meeting.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. With that, we will move on to city council reports. Seeing that, our colleague, Councilman Ron, has had to catch a flight here. Mr. City Manager, would you like to start off with his report for us?
Sure. I know he can't be replaced, but I'll try to pinch-hit for Councilman Ron. And yes, he apologizes, he did have to leave a little bit early to catch a plane out of LAX. But he asked me to sort of just speak briefly to this. This is this weekend, Saturday, September 27th. This is an annual event the city of Temecula puts on. It's family-friendly, it's out in front of City Hall from 9:00 to 1:00. A lot of great information is disseminated there. It's, it's a lot of great for, for the kiddos to come around and climb on police and fire vehicles and just have a good time here in Old Town. So, we want to invite the, the public out. This is a free event, and we hope you can come out and join us. If you need more information, you can find it there on, on the city's website. And I would be remiss, along those lines, to not recognize our county fire chief, Bill Weiser, who is in attendance, and I'm sure he'll do a meet and greet on Saturday for anyone that wants to come down and see us. So, thank you, Bill, for being here.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Well done pinch-hitting. Councilmember Schwenk.
Yes, thank you. I just have one slide, if we could just put that up really quickly, please. So, this past weekend, we were out cleaning up a creek. This is just right behind Chaparral High School. And this is our Public Works Department, they have a stormwater team that works alongside WR Cog, Love Your Neighborhood. Other partners include CRNR. There were several Rotary Clubs that were there and then just other residents and groups. And, you know, I think this is maybe the third or fourth cleanup that we've done. And if you know me, you know I hate like shopping carts and debris and trash. And so anytime we can go out as a community and, and pick up trash and clean our environment and make our community a better place, we're gonna do that. So I just wanted to thank everyone for, for coming out. I'll try to get like a little download on how much was actually pulled out of the creek, maybe in a weight or cubic yards or whatever. But it, you know, it's unfortunate how much trash is in our community. And we're making, making strides to make it a little bit cleaner. So keep an eye out on social media for the next cleanup. It's free to attend and it's a nice way to spend some time with your neighbors on a Saturday morning. So I just wanted to give a shout out to the crew that was out there. Thank you.
Thank you for that. The beautification of Temecula, one piece of a trash. Councilmember Stewart?
Yes, I believe I have a slide also. So October 11th is going to be Temecula History Days. And so that's over at Sam Hicks Park. It's always a fun, reminiscent of what used to be here in Temecula. So we, we look back on the tractor races. We look back on basically all the, the people who came before us. And so it's always a great event, lots of fun, great for the family. There's, we had like gold panning last year. Are we doing it again this year? Yeah, that was really a lot of fun. So, and like I said, the tractor races, which is really cute to see the little kids doing it. So that's October 11th, which, hard to believe, that's only a couple of weeks away. I mean, it feels like we're in October around the corner. So, yeah, come out for History Days. So thank you.
Thank you for that. And speaking of tractor races, we gotta bring that back somehow, the original tractor races. That'd be awesome. Mayor Pro Temp?
Alrighty, thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I just, I'm here today wearing this T-shirt. We are Team Temecula. And if you, as part of our community, wanna come out and show your support for our active-duty men and women who serve us overseas, we have a great opportunity for you guys to come forward and help out. One of the things, myself and Councilmember Schwenk, who are on the Military Subcommittee, are working with Milvet, who's a nonprofit here in the area out of Marietta. And we are looking for individuals as a city to sponsor boxes. That means businesses, schools, places of worship, different clubs, to be able to get items for our active-duty military that we are going to do a Care Package Day as a community, as a city, with Temecula and Marietta. So I just want to encourage everybody, number one, if you are a business or if you are an entity that would wanna be able to bring some of these items and collect them, the dates are here, from October 12th to November 12th. And you will have till the 29th of this, I think it's this month, yes, the end of the September 29th, to be able to sponsor a box. Also, we are looking for people to donate those items. Myself and Councilmember Schwenk will end up taking a couple of days here and there outside of different establishments, hopefully hoping to get people to encourage them to drop off and just have fun with this. The biggest thing is, is we wanna be able to have the community do this. This is not gonna be a city thing, it's really gonna be something that the community is investing in. And just looking at the website right now, currently, we have 32 different businesses and locations throughout our city in just Temecula. Marietta, they're falling behind a little bit, but that's okay. So just to give everybody a little heads up, I talked about it last time at our last city council meeting, our other city has decided to up the ante and ask, you know, well, what happens if somebody doesn't bring, like which city doesn't bring in enough items? So who's basically gonna be the loser in that? So we have decided to be Team Temecula and they're gonna be Team Marietta. And what's gonna happen is we're gonna continue to serve each other as a community. So when we win, the fact that we're gonna bring in the most amount of items as a city collectively, our counterparts in Marietta are going to end up coming over to clean our parks for two hours with a city shirt that says "I Love Temecula" on it. So again, it's just a way to continue the community's support, not just, you know, and it's a, it's a group that all of us can get behind. So again, if you have a business, if you have a group, a community, please start helping out, let's get this together. And there's gonna be more to come on this, so just continue to look at our website and social media. And I just very much appreciate it. And you also get some free marketing as well with this, which is really good. So economically, we're doing great as a, as a team to bring this all together. So thank you guys for your support. Let's, let's bring home a ton of goods for these men and women, so that way on November 6th, or November 16th, I believe, we can do our care packages here together at the CRC. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. What a great program that is. And moving on to my slide here, speaking of Team Temecula, there we are. A portion of Team Temecula went up to DC this last week. And I just wanna touch on a few things that we did. The first one was we met with the U.S. Department of Transportation and our federal reps, and we asked them to support $50 million for federal funding for the I-15 French Valley Phase, sorry, we thanked them for the French Valley Phase 2, $50 million. And we will also be asking $50 million or more so for the I-15 Bridge. So right now, we're currently in design and seeking that support for construction of Phase 3, which is the critical bridge over the 15 at the border of Marietta and Temecula. We also met with the U.S. Army Corps for Support of Riverside County's Flood Marietta Project, which Phase 2B is currently under construction. And myself and all my colleagues attended that groundbreaking the other day. We advocated for the Diaz Road expansion. $2 million of that is allocated to the city currently in this fiscal year budget. We talked about the Jedediah Smith Roundabout, which will be out to bid in spring of 2026. And we're working on the reconstruction of the La Paz Roundabout before that. And we're grateful to have the $800,000 of federal funding support there. And we also went over a few smaller infrastructure projects that we've been advocating for in regards to storm drain improvements, overland road widening, and overland bridge over to Diaz, and sidewalks in Old Town as well as the Temecula Creek Trail. So lastly, I just wanna thank our congressmen for their time and the U.S. Senators' offices for their time. We look forward to working with you in the future. And those meetings were extremely productive and it was an honor to represent the City of Temecula in DC. Like Councilmember Ron stated earlier, our congressman's position and their, how they're viewed by their colleagues was very well seen up there. Even Senator, they talked very highly of Senator Padilla. So the, the working together collaboratively between our congressman and the senators, it's going on. It was an honor to meet with them and, and looking forward to future projects ahead. And lastly, I think you saw me change the tie earlier. I'd be remiss, this is a little portrait here of, you can see me in my blonde hair. Thank you, Emmy, little six-year-old, she created this tie for me. Appreciate it. And I always love my create the mayor's tie. Only a few more meetings left this year to wear them. I think four after today, it's coming to a close quick here. I may have to wear one at the Housing, the Housing Town Hall. But that is all I have. We will move on to our consent calendar. Item number one, waive reading of title and text of all ordinances and resolutions included in the agenda. Item number two, approve action minutes of September 9th, 2025. Item number three, approve list of demands. Item number four, approve city treasurer's report for the period of July 1st, 2025 through July 31st, 2025. Item number five, adopt ordinance number 2025-13, amending sections 2.40.030, 2.40.050, 2.40.060, and 2.40.100 of the Temecula Municipal Code relating to the qualifications, appointment, and removal term and compensation for the city commission members, our second reading. Item number six, approve cooperative agreement with the County of Riverside Fire Department to provide fire protection, fire prevention, rescue, fire marshal hazmat, and medical emergency services to the City of Temecula for fiscal years 2025 through 2029, 2030. Item number seven, award construction contract to LC Paving and Sealing, Inc. for sidewalks, Paba Road, PW 1920. Item number eight, accept improvements and file the notice of completion for the Santa Crutus Creek Trail Phase 2, Margarita Road Undercrossing Rebid Project, PW 19-04. I will entertain a motion and a second.
Motion, second.
That has been moved and seconded. Please vote. And our consent calendar passes unanimously 4 to 0 with Councilmember Ron's noted absence. With that, we will recess our city council meeting to our Temecula Community Services District Meeting with President Schwenk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will now call the Temecula Community Services District Meeting to order. Madam Secretary, please note that we are all still here with the noted absence of Director Ron. Do we have any public comments for non-agenda items? Okay, we'll move to our consent calendar. We have two items. Item number nine is approve action minutes of September 9th, 2025. And item 10, approve First Amendment to an agreement with M&amp;J Paul Enterprises, Inc., DBA Jolly Jumps for Event and Program Rental Items. I will entertain a motion and a second.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let us please vote. All right, and that passes 4 to 0. Thank you very much. We'll now move to our business portion of the calendar. We have two items. We'll start with item 11 is receive recommendations related to Temecula Sunset Market and provide general direction regarding the same at the request of the Subcommittee Members Schwenk and Stewart. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, indeed. We have two PowerPoints, or one PowerPoint on this. Sorry, there we go. Okay, so just a little bit of history about Temecula Sunset Market. This is an evening market taking place twice a month that the city began to offer in partnership with a contract provider in 2023. And the market originally started on Wednesdays. And then we weren't having great attendance, so we moved it to Thursdays, thinking it would pick up a little bit, which it did. And we noticed at the beginning and end of the season, it was a little slow, so then we reduced the length of the season from running almost year-round to coinciding with daylight savings time to take advantage of better weather and longer daylight. And it still didn't really have, it's not had very robust attendance. Part of the contract stipulated that the city would provide a $20,000 per season financial support for the first two years of the market, with the intention that this would effectively be seed money to help get an evening market up and running. And in conceptualizing the market, we were looking at cities like Oceanside, San Luis Obispo, other cities that have really vibrant evening markets. Currently, the market is scheduled to run through October of 2025, so just next month. And then the contract with the current service provider expires in June of 2026. So there was a discussion at the Parks and Recreation and Community Services Subcommittee to sort of discuss the future of the Sunset Market, given that it hasn't quite, it hasn't quite gathered steam the way we had originally hoped it had. And we wanted to rethink and just make sure we were making the best use of the city's resources and also providing, you know, the activities that the community actually desires. Next slide, please. So with that, staff has proposed that we sort of re-envision this market. As you know, we've had summer concerts here in the City of Temecula for well over 20 years. They're extremely popular with everyone in town, they're extremely popular summer tradition. Typically, we offer five concerts per summer, and historically, they were offered over at the CRC Amphitheater. In 2023, we moved the final concert of the season here to Town Square Park. It was hugely popular. And in 2024, we moved the entire series over here because as much as we love the CRC Amphitheater, it maxes out capacity. And we were finding that there was such demand for the concerts that we were exceeding the capacity of the amphitheater. So by moving it to Town Square Park, we were able to increase capacity and we found that was a great move. We really had fantastic attendance at those concerts. So at the end of 2024, we noticed that the markets that fell on the nights that were concerts had great attendance and vice versa. It was just a really natural affinity between the two. So in 2025, we scheduled the concerts to make sure that every summer concert fell on a market night. And we discovered it was just a great synergy between the two events. The markets bring some people to the concerts who previously maybe hadn't checked those out, and vice versa, people coming to the concerts really enjoyed being able to go to the markets and buy food. It was a great way to spend some time. If you came early, set up your blankets and chairs, and then there was something to do until the concerts actually started. So with that, staff's proposal, which the Subcommittee supported, was to, for this next summer, 2026, expand the concert series from five concerts to eight concerts and not renew the contract for the summer markets on their own. Instead, staff will bring in food and artisan vendors for the concerts. And just as a side note, this is something staff does for most of our events, most of our larger events, like 4th of July. Staff is responsible for organizing all the vendors that come in for that. We would also be seeking sponsorships for the concert series to sort of underwrite those concert series because it's an excellent opportunity, which aligns with the sponsorship program that we brought before council at the last meeting. The benefits of this include that it would reduce the total number of road closures here in Old Town from approximately 16 for the Sunset Market to eight for the concerts. And we would realize some cost recovery from the vendor fees for the vendors that would come in to set up during the concerts as well as from sponsorships. So with that, that is staff's recommendation, and we just wanted to bring it before the full council to see if we have your concurrence on that. With that, I'm available to answer any questions.
Great, thank you very much, Director Reese. Are there any questions of staff on this?
Just one question.
Sure, go ahead.
For the artisan food, is there, is it possible to seek businesses that are in Old Town and almost give them first right of refusal to be vendors at the markets?
Yes.
Prior to looking to outside?
We can definitely reach out to Old Town businesses and see if they would be interested in vending.
That'd be great. That was my only question. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Any other questions? Are there any public comments? All right, since there's no public comments, we'll go to discussion and/or motion on this item.
I just wanna thank the Subcommittee for putting in all that work. I know staff and you guys put in work. And we had that big discussion on road closures a few months back. And this was precisely what I lobbied for. So I, I wholly support and thank you for putting in the work in the Subcommittee.
And I, I do wanna say that, you know, despite it didn't quite work for the City of Temecula, I mean, 'cause I, I was a big proponent of it because of what I experienced in Marietta. And, and, you know, I had someone say, but there's really nothing to do in Marietta. So that's why they're so well-attended there. And we have so much to do here already. So it was hard to gain that synergy necessary to, to kinda with the market into, into shape. So I'm very supportive of this new path that we're on. And being a live music guy, I love the fact that we're gonna extend the concerts. And, you know, frankly, our weather is such that as soon as it starts cooling down, it's hard to wanna come out and, and walk around a market. So, you know, it's, there are, we have a very limited weather window. And so that's why it just, you know, I think for the City of Temecula, this is a good move. So that's, I'm very supportive. And I'd like to make that motion.
Okay, fair enough. Any comments or anything?
I'd just like to make one comment. Stu, thank you for bringing this item forward from the Sunset Market initially, you know? Maybe it wasn't what the initial envision was, but still, it brings a lot of culture to our Old Town area. So thank you. So with that, I'd like to make a second.
Yeah. Okay, before we vote, I'll just make a quick comment. I think, you know, you kinda summed it up very well, Stu, the, the idea of, you know, we thought this market was something that the community, you know, sort of needed or wanted. You really start to peel back the layers. There's, there's a market at the mall, there's a market here on Saturday, and you go to Marietta, then there's a, there's like a food truck thing at Senna Senna, you know, there's a lot of stuff, you know, sort of happening. But, but always, you know, it was like, oh, we need to market down here on Wednesdays, Wednesdays, Wednesdays. And it never really happened, you know? So we, we move it to Thursday and you attach a concert to it and you're like, oh, wow, that works, you know? So there's a lot in here that I think is gonna be helpful, especially with like the sponsorship agreement. Like this is gonna be that really good test case to like sort of try some of these new things we're working on. So while the initial market didn't necessarily pan out the way we wanted it, I think we're gonna end up with a better product in the end. And we know how well staff does, you know, 4th of July, rod run, and the vendor sort of coordination, I think is gonna be great. So with that, we shall vote. All right, and that passes 4 to 0. We'll now move to item 12, which is receive recommendation related to New Year's Eve Grape Drop and provide general direction regarding the same at the request of Subcommittee Members Schwenk and Stewart. Do we have a staff report?
We do. We have a PowerPoint on this one also. There we go. Oops. Okay. So as everyone knows, Temecula is known for its New Year's Eve Grape Drop, which I believe was voted by USA Today as one of the best slash quirkiest New Year's Eve celebrations in the country. It's been a Temecula tradition since 2009. And those are the new and updated LED grapes you see there in the picture. And in last year- And in last year, in 2024, for New Year's Eve, we did our inaugural drone show, and it was a hit. It far exceeded even our expectations. You know, it was a novel thing for us to try for the City of Temecula, and we were absolutely thrilled with the crowd reaction. So anyone who was here, if you, you know, if you were part of the crowd out front, I mean, it was just the oohs and ahs, and everybody loved the drone show. That drone show cost approximately $20,000, and the way the drone show was set up, if you didn't have a chance to see it, is preceding the actual grape drop. We had our drone show with a number of animations lit up by the drones that, with different symbols that represented Temecula in one way or another, culminating in a numeric countdown where the drones form the numbers to count down towards the drop. And then at the end of the countdown, the audience had to sort of pivot to then look at the grapes which were suspended over the fountain, and then the grapes dropped as usual. Next slide, please. Thinking about, and at the Parks and Recreation Subcommittee, considering some of our options for this next New Year's Eve, it was absolutely a foregone conclusion that we would continue with the drone show because it was such a hit. But we floated a new idea, which people seem to get on board with, which was the idea that the grape drop would be incorporated into the drone show itself as an animation. There's a couple of reasons why we think this might be beneficial. As you can see in that picture, there's a very large crane that suspends the grapes. Historically, the grapes were mounted on the front of City Hall. There were some issues concerning the raising and lowering of the grapes from City Hall, which was never really designed to be a structure for raising and lowering grapes. The crane that you see has some great advantages in terms of height, safety, being able to get it out over the fountain, as you can see it there, it makes a real focal point, but the crane is ugly, and it creates some logistical issues just in terms of getting a crane that large into Old Town and getting everything situated. So the thought was we could take advantage of technology, utilize the drone show, and have as part of the, the final part of the drone show, the countdown like we did last time, and then an actual animation of the grapes, which would then drop at the end of the countdown. We think that would have a bigger, for lack of a better term, wow factor. Based on the crowd's reaction to the drone animations we saw last year, we think this would be extremely well-received. It avoids having the crane, which would save approximately $6,000 in cost, and logistically, it avoids the delay in countdown. So one of the things we noticed last year was getting that timing right between the countdown and the drones, and then having everyone pivot and turn and look at the grapes. Very tricky. There's no voiceover telling people, and now please turn 90 degrees and, and watch the grapes drop. So this would avoid trying to get the entire crowd to sort of synchronize and turn and look at the grapes themselves. Instead, we would still display the grapes. We would have them displayed here in front of City Hall, but the drop itself would be in a drone animation. So that was the recommendation of the subcommittee, and again, we're bringing that before the full council for any feedback on that proposal.
Thank you very.
I was just, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director Risa. Are there any questions of staff for this item? Okay. Madam Secretary, are there any public comments on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll open up for discussion and/or motion and second.
Motion.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
I love it.
Okay, fair enough. No, I think it's going to be great. And, you know, the, the crane was never like, no one was ever stoked on the crane, so like, let's try this, I think it'll be better, and get the grapes back on City Hall where they belong, so this'll be good. Okay, and that item passes four to zero. Director of Community Services, a report this evening?
Yes, just one slide for that. We have our Art Walk this Friday, October 3rd, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. That's over at the Merc and the Lot on Main Street in Old Town Temecula. It's our open-air market where we have artisans, live music, and refreshments. By all means, come on down, enjoy it. It's a great way to kick off your Friday evening in Old Town. That concludes my report.
Wonderful, thank you. General Manager, anything?
Nothing further, Mr. President.
Thanks, sir. Directors, anything?
Just one comment.
Go.
I just wanted to thank Timmy D. and Tori, who are the owners and operators of the Sunset Market. I know it was a, Tori, it was a passion project for her, and I can see the passion in her eyes when she held those markets. And so I just want to thank them for, for doing what they did, and we look forward to partnering with you on more city events in the future. We're sad this one didn't work out, but we're excited for the future. That's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn this.
I do have one comment.
Sure, go ahead.
So if you've never done that Art Walk, it is a lot of fun.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, literally, I cruise in Old Town all the time, and whenever the Art Walk is, I always stop and make sure I walk through because, I mean, they do have live music there, too. So it's kind of another opportunity to sit and listen to somebody with some talent. And, and again, I totally concur with the mayor. Timmy, Tori did an amazing job with the market. It's just, it is what it is, so thank you.
So are you telling me that Temecula, the City of Temecula, is not anti-live music? Are you, is that what you're saying?
Not anti-live music at all.
Crazy.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and adjourn to our next meeting, Tuesday, October 14th.
All right, moving on, we have no meeting for the successor agency of the Temecula Redevelopment Agency. We have no meeting for our Temecula Housing Authority. We have a joint meeting between the Temecula Public Financing Authority and City Council. I will call to order that meeting. Madam City Clerk, please note that we are all still here with the absence of Councilmember Ron. Do we have any public comments? I will move on to our consent calendar. We have item number 13, approve action minutes of September 9th, 2025. I will entertain a motion and a second.
Second.
That has been motioned and second. And that passes unanimously, four to zero. Moving on to our TPFA Council Public Hearing. Item number 14, approve issuance of special tax bonds for Temecula Public Financing Authority Community Facilities District Number 23-02 Prado. May we have a staff report, please? Director Hennessy.
All right, thank you. Good evening. So tonight, we have an issuance, a tax bond issuance, related to the Prado CFD, and we have Jim Fabian from Fieldman Rollup. He is the city's financial advisor for all things CFD and bonds-related, so he's going to give you a brief presentation tonight.
Thanks, Jennifer. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Pleasure to be here tonight. We have a short presentation related to the issuance of bonds for the Prado CFD 23-02. Just some background on the Prado project. Meritage Homes is the builder of that particular project. The CFD was formed back in 2024. There are 237 detached homes that will be part of that project. They're about halfway through that project right now in terms of the development. This is an aerial, recent aerial photo of the project that we will be using in the official statement to market the bonds. The authorization is for $20 million of bonds. We will not issue that much, but it is overall not to exceed amount. The bonds will finance infrastructure for roadway, water, sewer, and school facilities. The debt service on these bonds are paid from the special taxes that are levied specifically within the boundaries of the CFD. Overview of the bond structure, based upon the revenue stream and current interest rates, we're looking at approximately $16,450,000 of bonds that would be issued, that would have a 30-year term, so the last term of the bond would be September 1, 2056. We will have a little bit of capitalized interest, just to take us through the build-out of the project, September 1, 2027. As I mentioned, the improvement fund, which will be about $13 million when we net out the issuance costs in the reserve fund, will be used to reimburse Meritage Homes under the amended acquisition agreement that is in front of you for approval tonight. We also have joint community facilities districts with the school district and EMWD on this project. Once again, no liability to the city's general fund. The special taxes levied against the property will secure repayment of the bonds. Tonight in your packet, you have several documents. The first is the fiscal agent agreement, really outlines the term of the bonds, the, the mechanisms under which debt service and bond proceeds are spent down, and debt service is paid to bondholders over the length of the, of the bonds. You have the preliminary official statement. This is an important document. It's an offering statement that provides information to potential investors to, to make their individual decision about whether they will buy the bonds when they are sold by Stiefel, who is the city's underwriter on this transaction. The bond purchase agreement is between the authority and the underwriter, Stiefel, to be able to buy the bonds from you and then resell them to the investors. You'll also have continuing disclosure agreement. Each year will be required to let the marketplace know about the project development and payment of debt service over the 30-year term of the bonds. The finance team, I'm joined tonight by Nick Jaeger of Stradling, who is serving as bond counsel and disclosure counsel. Again, my firm, Fieldman Rollup, is municipal advisor. Webb Municipal Finance is the city's special tax consultant. Stiefel Nicholas is the underwriter. Their counsel is Enzo Gavin. And then the appraiser that we used on the project is Integra Realty Resources. Just going through the schedule tonight, we have in front of you the public hearing to approve all required documents for the sell of the bonds. We're looking, based upon our current schedule, to sell the bonds on October the 7th. Then the bonds would close approximately two, two weeks later on October the 23rd. At that point in time, the proceeds are available to reimburse the developer when infrastructure is completed or fees paid at that point in time per the amended acquisition agreement. So tonight, our recommended actions is to conduct the public hearing in accordance with law. We would then have the city council adopt the resolution approving the issuance. The authority board also would adopt the resolutions approving the issuance and all bond documents that I described earlier. And happy to answer any questions that you have regarding any of the documents in front of you this evening.
Thank you very much. Is that approved stamp right there, a foreshadow of our approval?
It's wishful thinking, right?
Any questions from my colleagues?
Yes, I do.
Councilmember Stu?
So who determines the interest rate on these bonds?
The, basically, the bond market does. So at that point in time, when we, we have our bond sale on October the 7th, I'll be working closely with Jennifer and staff as the municipal advisor to the city to work with Stiefel Nicholas, who will be underwriting the bonds. Based upon market conditions, at that point in time, they'll propose a scale to us to buy the bonds from you at certain interest rates. And again, these are 30-year bonds, non-rated, so that there's no credit rating with the, the bonds. This type of investor is somebody who's looking for a little bit more yield because they're non-rated. They like California real estate. They know that this project's going to be built out and become very reliable revenue source after the build-out of the residence. And so the interest rate really will be determined on October the 7th, based upon the current interest rate environment at that point in time. What we do in working with Jennifer is we canvas and look at other non-rated CFDs that have sold recently to be able to get a proxy of, of whether the interest rates proposed by Stiefel are acceptable from a standpoint of comparability to other non-rated CFDs that have sold recently.
And these are tax-exempt, correct?
They're tax-exempt from federal and state taxes. That's correct.
Okay. Any more questions? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments? I will close the public hearing, and I will entertain a discussion and/or a motion and a second.
Motion to approve?
And that's for both resolutions?
Yes.
Motion and a second for both resolutions. Let us vote. And item number 14 passes unanimously, four to zero, with Councilmember Ron's absence. We will move on to our TPFA Executive Director Report.
Nothing further tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Board of Directors? Seeing none, I will adjourn the TPFA meeting, and I will reconvene the Temecula City Council Departmental reports, we will receive and file those. Items for future city council agendas. Any of my colleagues have anything? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, did anyone sneak in, and do you have any more public comments? Thank you very much. Moving on to City Manager Report.
No report tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. City Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. We had a closed session, but we have nothing to report under the Brown Act from the closed session.
Thank you very much. Mr. Thorson? With that, I will adjourn this meeting to our next scheduled meeting at City Council on Tuesday, October 14th. See you then.